The Village of New Paltz on October 22, 2014 at 7:30 PM. A public hearing regarding an amendment to Chapter 160 of the New Paltz Village Code regarding a ban on retail checkout bags.
Thank you. Is anyone here to speak to this? Yes, sir.
I am. Let's speak to him.
Please.
What's a good place for you here or?
Wherever, wherever you're comfortable.
Sounds good. Stand up. First of all, let's say, give me a little period. Let's say the ban gets enacted and we're all carrying our groceries home from now on reusable bags. No more plastic bags, right? But wait, now I have to throw out my trash, so I have to go buy plastic bags. And these will be thicker and heavier plastic bags, taking up more landfill space than before, and giving lots of additional money to the big chemical companies making those plastic bags as opposed to getting them free in the supermarket. Now, what about these cloth or woven polypropylene bags? The cloth bags are the ones you pay more for, and these can be washed easily in a washing machine. And these are the cheaper polypropylene bags, the ones you get for 99 cents in the supermarket. Now, studies have shown, a lot of studies have shown, that these bags can get easily contaminated with bacteria. Made even worse when much than a hot card crumb, and the bacteria starts to grow like crazy. Three years ago, the CDC, the Centers for Disease Control, estimated there were 38 million cases of undiagnosed foodborne illnesses. The state was worried if you pulled their food, and a lot of them, they estimate, came from putting food into these bags and people not washing the products. People don't. And a toss it. If you put these bags on the street, you're walking along the street, you put them down, and it could pick up, who knows what on the outside, but let's say dog feces. So you can go clean up up their dogs as well, for sure. Then you don't wash it, and you take it next time to the supermarket, you put it into the shopping cart. Ideally, you should put them underneath, but you put them on top, then you're contaminating the shopping cart too. And there's no way of exactly tracing exactly when somebody gets sick. Hey, it came from that bag in that shopping cart. You don't know. Somebody gets sick, you just accept it. I got the food, what can you do? Now, there was an independent study done recently by Dr. Sid Claire from the Hoover-Linda University, Public Health in California, who said that reusable grocery bags are as clean as the soles of shoes for dirty underwear. That's what we want to put out there, great. Well, can't we just wash them after we eat shoes? Because that would eliminate like 100% of the bacteria. Problem is, as I said, these you can wash in a machine, but most people don't. You should wash them every time with hot water. And these guys here, you can't put in a machine, because they're going to just fall apart. So what they recommend is actually scrubbing in the soap and water. And I just can't see most people, every time when they bring their bag home, going, I know I've got something to do with scrubbing our bags, but people just don't think about it. And on top of that, it's going to use lots of water and energy. We're talking about being ethologically sound. What about plastic bag litter? If you think about it, these kind of bags are designed to be taken into the home. You go shopping with them, you carry groceries, they go in the car or whatever, they go home. The real culprit is the little bags you get in the convenience store or cake out place, deli, where often it's a sandwich eaten, and then they throw them away, and that bag ends up blown in the wind, far more than the other bags. So what's the solution? We all agree there are way too many bags. The real solution is to educate people about how to do stuff. If you kept these around, take only as many as you need. We use them as trash bin liners, recyclable ones, even put a 5 cent tax on it. And if you want more tips, I got from the California State Health Department, at least a whole page of stuff. For the reusable bags, never carry meat or throw it to the center, because it could leak. Carry on canned foods, non-vegetarian diets. And then only use the good cloth bags, and make sure you wash them every time. Because it's, and it's a very trendy thing to jump on the bag wagon and say, ban that bag, ban those plastic bags, ban the bag, ban it. Try saying that five times fast. But we really think you should just think this through in New Paltz and just decide, what's the best way before we just say, let's jump on the bag wagon and ban it?
Thank you so much, sir. Anyone else here to speak to this? Yes, Amy?
Hi, my name is Amy Cohen, and I'm here tonight for a couple reasons.
This is actually a public hearing. Public comment comes later.
I know, so I'm only right now here for the bags. And I'm a village shop owner in the Village of New Paltz. My husband and I have owned one shop here for 18 years, and our second shop here for the last four or five. And we do use plastic bags. And honestly, do I really care if we use plastic bags or not? I don't really care. I could buy paper bags. My customers are fine with paper bags. But my customers are not fine with not having parking spots. My customers are not fine with not having directional signs to know where to go. They come here off the freeway, they have no idea where they're supposed to go, what they're supposed to do, which way is this, which way is that. There's no bathroom. So if they have a baby to change, or somebody who really has to go, they might have to leave, because there's no place to put their car, and certainly no place to go to the bathroom.
Amy, if you could limit it, save those.
I really am. No, this is like really part of us. It's a swip, swip. So I talked to some business owners up and down Main Street, and I spoke to Donna Leffler yesterday, yesterday. And our idea is, we're willing to voluntarily give out paper bags. And we're willing to voluntarily no longer purchase and give out plastic bags. And I mean, for me and the couple of people that I spoke to, some of them aren't really that happy about it, but they're willing to do it. So what I would like to suggest to the Environmental Committee and to the Village Board would be that instead of spending the $8,000 or $10,000 that we would have to spend to make a law, that we take the $8,000 or $10,000 and we do something to help businesses downtown. Like have directional signs for our tourists, or work on a municipal parking lot, or have better decorations at Christmas time, or, you know, there's a whole bunch of things on our wish list. And I would personally be willing to volunteer, to go with anybody from the Environmental Committee or by myself and another business owner, and get a declaration signed. And I think if we could get 15 to 20, 25 business owners on board with a pledge not to use plastic bags, we could even do a short video on their pledge, so we have them recorded. I would think that would be sufficient enough for this village to feel like we're all doing our part. If you guys decide that plastic bags aren't good, and I'd be willing to help make that happen. And I think that considering our economic situation, in our school, in our village, we'd better off, even if we didn't do anything for the downtown, we just gave the money towards the people that have to pay for their own sewer hookups now, who are really upset. Just seems like there's a lot of things we need money for, and these laws are costing us a lot of money. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Amy. Anyone else? Yes, Adele. And then Jonathan.
I didn't actually come to this, but I did glance it over before I came, and something caught my eye. And what it was, was that property owners can get cited if the businesses are not using paper bags. So Amy Cohen, landlord of the Ruby Blueberry, can get a fine, unless I read this wrong, can get a fine if Amy Cohen is not using paper bags. Sounds ridiculous. I hope I'm wrong.
So maybe both can find, or?
No, it says whichever.
Or.
Or the property owner, or the landlord, or the business owner, or whoever they want.
So I guess.
So you, I mean, it just sounded so ridiculous to me that a property owner that doesn't own a business is going to get a fine because their tenant is not using bags. So I hope you look at that.
Let me read the sentence for people who don't have the law on their hands. It's under 160, Section 160-5A. In the event that there is noncompliance with this chapter, the owner of the property where the violation has occurred, or the owner's agent, or the person committing such violation, shall be notified in writing with a first-time warning and shall forthwith stop the violating activity. That's the section?
Yeah, it sounds bizarre.
So it's an or, or, or. The owner, the agent, or the.
But the owner of the property shouldn't even be in there. It's the business owner you need to be talking. I mean, if you're going to do this, it's the business owner. It's not the owner of the property, unless they are one and the same. But if they're not one and the same, this sounds ridiculous to me.
Well, thank you for that comment. Jonathan, I think you were next.
Yeah, I really don't agree with not only this law, but the other ones that you guys are legislating. You're spending a lot of money that you really can't afford to spend at this moment. I, you know, I think if I had to use, which we do, we use a lot of paper. But I'm unhappy with the paper, because I don't like to cut down trees. I want to save the trees. And so we always put a lot of effort into sometimes using a plastic bag, because in addition to saving trees, let's say a box of 1,000 bags may be this big in plastic, but in paper, it's this big, and it weighs 10 times or 20 times the weight. So for me to call up my distributor, my bag distributor, and say, gee, I need, let's say, five bundles of bags, well, now it takes up, each bundle takes up, depending on the size of the bag, this much space, it used to take up this much space. Depending five of those, it takes almost like a quarter of a truck. So now, so now the delivery guy is now burning maybe four times the amount of gasoline that he would normally not have to burn. So I mean, it's a very delicate balance. I was listening to this gentleman make his comment, and as far as the cleanliness of a reusable bag, it's just, it's true. It's almost as clean as your toilet bowl, or as your kitchen counter. The bacteria just remains on those bags unless there's a way you can bleach them or disinfect them. And it's really, not really a good system. It really doesn't really work properly. On top of the fact that, as I said, we don't have a lot of money in our village. And I just came back from a school board meeting, because they have that 52, 50 million dollar bond that they want to, you know, enact. So I believe, as far as, oh, we'll just stay actually. I believe with all these, with all these village laws, and a lot of these laws are going to be contested in court, a lot of the 78s, so even the mayor's, I think, yeah, the village is 18, I mean, it was a article in the papers, $18,000 in the hole, defending the mayor's Article 78 lawsuit against the village. So now we're $18,000 down the hole, defending his lawsuit. And then there's going to be a lawsuit with the tenant landlord legislation. I promise you there will be a lawsuit. I don't know how many thousands of dollars. Let's say, oh, I don't know, between the lawsuits, $150,000, $200,000. We're going to have to pay taxes. Our school budget's going up, our taxes, our village taxes are going to go substantially, because our village board doesn't really, for some reason, they don't care about how much we're spending. Our town taxes is going to go up, because our liability with our pensions, with our workers, are going up substantially.
Jonathan, if you could narrow it to the plastic bags, that would be helpful.
So just to say that, to legis, to just legislate the frivolous legislation just because we think it's a good idea, when for the most part, all the, all the town, all the village businesses, we cooperate. We've signed a declaration. We don't have to spend all this money. I don't understand the purpose of it. Spending this money, it seems like for nothing. Are we grandstanding? Can we afford to spend $10,000 to legislate to make a point? When we just realize that reusable bags are not the best option. We realize that paper bags are still not the best options if we all care about the trees that grow on our planet. And there's, so there's so much that we have to consider before we start making laws and cramming these, this legislation down residents' throats. Now, we are individuals. We all care about Mother Earth, and we all care about sustainability and keeping her healthy and alive. I don't think there's one individual in this room that doesn't believe that. We all as individuals want that. But do we believe that these laws created by a collective of small individuals that are going to tax us more, that's going to put more burden on us for absolutely no reason at all if we're all to cooperate? Now, I understand, you know, your efforts, it's really, it's commendable, because it's a good idea. And we all, because it's some things that we believe in, sustainability. But yet, I believe we can do it, and you made the best statement ever. Education, you didn't say it this way, but you said, if we educate the residents, if we educate in lieu of legislate, it goes a lot further. So I thank you very much. I really appreciate your comment. I appreciate your comment.
Thank you, Jonathan.
I want to say, one of the things you mentioned, paper bags, paper bags cost like a four or five times as much as plastic for store owners to buy, and then they're often doubled, because it's raining especially, you can't carry them.
That's right.
So you're going to spend 20 cents when you spend.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, I'm sorry. We're going to move on. If you have another comment to make, you can speak after everyone else. Everyone who hasn't spoken yet has had a chance to say their piece. Don?
I appreciate the comments. Yes, this is why we have on the hearing to get different points of view, and I appreciate the comments I heard. I, you know, with regard to the cost of passing laws, that's a good argument for everyone to just go home and not protest again. I mean, there's, there's a cost associated with doing your job and with making, making the village run efficiently, and that requires passing laws. I don't think it's, you know, people often, in their heads, figure this is an issue between plastic or paper. And I completely respect what Jonathan said. There's, you know, there's negatives sometimes with paper. But what we're, we're not trying to drive people to paper. We're trying to drive, try to drive consciousness and put the burden for packaging not on the business owner, but at people bringing their own reusables. And I very much respect your point about the health concerns with regard to reusable bags. You know, I send my kids to school every day with a backpack with a sandwich and fruit and whatever, and I think the same concerns that one might have about reusable bags, because you've got every backpack you see on campus, both in the college and in the high school and middle school and in UZ. It's not a, it's a reasonable concern. People should keep their things clean, whether they are backpacks or reusable bags. And I, so I accept that version. I think we do need to educate people. People, you know, need to be responsible with making that shift. But the, this issue is well reasoned. We have taken language from five other communities in New York and just duplicated it. Good catch on the enforcement part. Something that other communities may have embraced, that maybe we might, we might want to take a look at. I don't know if you took another. But China has banned plastic bags. Australia has banned plastic bags. Most of Africa has banned plastic bags. The, the research and the reasoning behind this is not, this is not trendy. This is not new. There are areas of our ocean where there are whirlpools, you know, the size of Rhode Island. And I might be incorrect on the size, but that's huge. Taxes? Taxes. Boy, was I wrong. In the oceans, and that's ultimately where a lot of these bags are. So I, you know, I very much respect and appreciate the comments and the good people in the room. This is just, it's the thing to do in a friendly, roundabout policy question. We can talk about this some more after the meeting.
Thank you, Don. Anyone else? Let me just make sure that no one else who hasn't spoken in.
Jason, since we are having a hearing and the author of the law is here. I had a note, and I want to thank Adele for catching it, because I had a note on the same chapter. And John, is it acceptable that in 160-5, in the event that there is noncompliance with this chapter by a business in the Village of New Paltz, the owner shall be notified in writing?
Absolutely. The way that I had interpreted the ors was that the offending individual that did not comply, be it a business, the way that I thought in that was whether that business was leased or owner of the business. That's what I thought was implied by the or. But if you saw it to amend it in a way that was more specific to the business and not having the order of the property.
Right. I mean, I think Adele, what Adele pointed out to the other faculty and needs to be addressed, and if we can agree to that in the hearing, then that will save us some time.
Yeah, I agree with Adele, and you, and Ariana, and John.
I agree.
Oh, we all agree.
Yeah.
And I also would like to point out and clarify, it does not cost $10,000 to do a law in the Village of New Paltz.
Can you give us a price quote, Tom?
It would depend on the law.
Well, a law is different than writing a law.
You could give us a range.
Not now.
Not this, no, not this.
This is not an appropriate time for back and forth. This is a time for, it's a public hearing on a law.
We're doing this as a fact, you're correct, but we should move on from the legal costs.
We can do that later.
Yeah. Is there anyone else who hasn't had a chance to say anything?
I would just, Jason, that we would be the sixth, we just have the New York City that has enacted the exact same law that we are proposing has been done in five other municipalities. We would be the first inland municipality, which is not on the Long Island Sound or the Atlantic Ocean, which means we would be the first river community whereby we were doing it as a means to defend other waterways other than the Sound and the Ocean, which I think is also an important thing to note and another impetus for enacting the law.
And there were all coastal communities. John, actually, I have a quick question. I heard something, I'm not sure you would know, that the state of California has banned plastic bags statewide. Is that true?
It is your bag, yeah.
It is true. I heard that. Okay, I thought I heard that on the news. Anyone, anyone else who hasn't spoken yet? All right, Jonathan, I think you had the final word.
Yeah, to Don's statement, you're right. California, Australia, maybe China, I don't know China, but I don't agree with that. But let's say maybe, the difference between us and those entities, right, is that we probably have maybe, 20 businesses that really use plastic bags, 20, 25, everybody's looking to cooperate. Everybody's looking to get into the whatever paper or reusable bag game. Everybody's willing to sign a declaration without having to create a law. We're a very small village. We don't have to really concern ourselves with metropolis to have to, you know, enforce. And incidentally, you're going to enforce, you're going to create this law. We're going to have to enforce the law. So we're going to have to send around inspectors. Do we have the money for this? I don't know. To now check to see each store, look inside their thing, look inside their puppies, to make sure that they don't have any plastic bags, when everybody's looking to cooperate and do it. I just don't understand the necessity for a small, little, gentle, little village like ours to have to worry about legislating laws that try to dictate to store owners that are willing to do it anyway to create these laws. It's just absolutely onerous. It's repressive. And I understand you have, I understand you have good intentions, but the road to hell is paved with good intentions. This is because this is completely unnecessary in New Paltz. As I say, if it was Kingston, if it was New York City, if it was China, if it was Australia, if it was the entire state of California, I get it. You want to make a statement, you want to make a law, and that's the way it's going to be. This is a little village. Can't we all cooperate in nice, gentle manner? Because there all have to be laws and enforcement, and if you don't do this, we're going to send around the inspection. What kind of little town do we live in now anymore? I don't understand. As they say, if nobody was willing to cooperate, I get it. You really want to make a point, but everybody's willing to do it. Why? Let's say if it costs $2,000 to make a law. Let's just pick a number out of a hat. It's still too much money if everybody's willing to do it. I can see that. Why? I still don't understand why. I don't get it. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Anyone else here to speak to? Yeah, Leonard?
I don't know what these plastic bags are made out of, but what comes to mind is packaging material. They have two types, or I've seen two. They have one that you put underwater, which is like made out of cornstarch and just dissolves. So my assumption is that we're trying to, you know, the intent is to ban non-biodegradable type materials. So again, I don't really know if they make bags out of cornstarch, which would dissolve.
They do.
Oh, okay, so.
Cellulose, yeah.
The, I don't see anything wrong with a biodegradable bag. I mean, that actually fits into the same category as a paper bag. They will both degrade over time. And that's what our intention is. Cornstarch is a natural product which will easily go away. So I think that the language of this should be written, that if you want to ban plastic bags, that a non-biodegradable type bag is what is the intent that I think that you're going for. But again, I have to agree strongly with Jonathan that I would at least walk up and down the streets of the village and find out, listen, do you have a problem switching to paper bags? Or asking, or telling your intent, because I'm quite sure many of the local businesses may not even know.
But just to, because we may not have a law in front of you, again, the definitions that are in this law are very specific about this being related to plastic. And I don't believe that cellulose would be categorized as a plastic. It'd be a fossil fuel derivative. So a cellulose-based bag, I'd imagine, would be exempt from this law. And as, so basically, you're right, you know what I'm saying? And the law makes allowance for that.
It's funny, because I'm sitting here right now, and I don't know anything. I know that's plastic is moldable, so. I don't really know. I'll go look up.
You're old school, man. You use the old definition of plastic, yeah. Anyone else here to speak to this law? All right, then I'll move to be close to the public hearing, what, Seth?
At the bottom, we agreed on an effective date, which is not there. I want to note that it's April 2015.
I have to say, under checkout bag in the definitions, I know it says plastic bag, bag up here, but does it have to say plastic under checkout bag? A carryout bag that is provided to a customer at the point of sale?
Well, you know what, maybe.
Because then that would include.
Well, I was going to propose just putting discussion of this local law on the agenda for tonight and putting it earlier if there's people, you know, one of our many things.
Okay, cool.
That way we can talk about the pros and cons, but leave the public hearing to the.
But the, the date needed to be in the law after the time of the hearing, and we agreed upon it. And it shows blank.
Oh, what we, right, right, right.
Yeah, because we, and I want to talk about Adele's comment too. So I'd like to talk about that.
I'll move to close the hearing.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? My Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so we've got a couple of changes. I've got various emails and texts today. Starting from the top, Mr. Ziller would like number three removed. He's not going to be attending that conference after all. And I would also like to add to the consent agenda the memo we got from Blue regarding trainings for the DPW. I'll just go down my list, and we can do it as a whole or not.
Okay, Jason, without removing it from the consent agenda, the approval for the ZBA attorney has a spelling error in the last paragraph. So that should be corrected.
What does a spelling error?
Let's see, it is, on the last paragraph, it says nor was will. It should be no.
The very first word.
Yeah, all right. So with that change, we'll add that to the consent agenda. Number nine we will be removing and addressing at upcoming meeting. Number 14 we will be removing, because we can do that in-house, we believe, rather than have to contract with someone.
Number 14?
Number 14, yes.
The streetlights.
No, you, oh, look at the agenda in your packet. Katie sent this updated one on Monday or Tuesday.
Yeah, I had.
It should have been at the table, I'm sorry.
At the table.
Does yours have a number 15?
Oh.
Discussion on the report by Dave Plouser?
No, mine.
Okay, so you have an outdated.
I have one.
It should have been at your, at your seat at the table.
Number 14.
Number 14, Adobe Pro, we don't need to talk about. And that is all that I have. Oh, and I'd also like to add discussion of the local law we just had the hearing for.
Yes, yes.
Is there anything else to add or subtract from the agenda?
Are we adjusting the title of the planner this evening?
I don't believe we need to, do we?
No, we have not changed it.
No, because we got confirmation on it, but in between our, our waiting ahead for tonight.
Do we want that part of, part of the consent agenda?
Yeah, why don't we add that to the consent agenda? Is there any objection?
No.
All right.
Do we need specific language on it?
No, I'm not sure we need the approval, but it doesn't hurt to have it. I think, I think we're all set, but.
You need to change the title for civil service.
So the motion that would go on the consent agenda would be to change the title from
Our title to municipal planner.
Director of Planning, Zone and Code Enforcement to municipal planner. All right. Anything else? All right, I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, public comment? Anyone here to say anything you'd like to say? Adele?
I'm here to make a comment on the housing law that is on the agenda again. So I want to say again, I don't see any changes to it, so, um, two things, two major issues that I believe are problematic in the law, is that the law requires landlord to put their displaced tenants in temporary housing whether or not it's the fault of the landlord. That's the way the law needs. It says just if it's not the fault of the tenant, but things happen that are not the fault of the landlord, and the landlord should not be responsible to put their tenants in temporary housing. If, for example, the village has a water main break, or something like that. It's not fair, and I imagine it's not legal. Second issue I have is the registration. So a registration is a form you fill out, you answer questions, you provide proof of ownership perhaps, and you might pay a little fee, and you're registered. The way it's set up in this law, it's not a registration. Even though you're calling it a registration, it's a license, and a license should not be required to rent the property. You're making the property, you're going to go through a whole bunch of things, including inspection prior to being registered. That's not a registration, that's a license. You're not giving them a registration, you're giving them a license. I fill out piece of paper, I bring it in, I show you that I own the property, I pay a fee, and I'm registered. Then, I make an appointment for inspection, I pass or I don't pass the inspection, but it has nothing to do with being registered. That's, those are my two comments for that. I have a couple of other questions, because this whole thing about all these laws and reading all this trouble that's going on, with not, people not being hooked up on some of the streets and not having enough money and all this stuff, and I would be curious to know how many laws this village has passed. I mean, this just seems to be, and, you know, I agree with John to a certain extent, you have to pass laws, but that is not only what you're here for. But it does appear that that is only what you're here for. I'd like to see some more positive action, not all of these laws that put nooses around people's necks and don't let them operate the way they want to freely. It just doesn't feel like it's a free place anymore. So I'd like to know, and I don't know how I find this out, maybe it's just a question I need to ask, is it a foil, or can someone tell me? And how do we compare to other places? I've heard, you know, spoken, that we have more laws than any village anywhere that people know. I don't know if that's true, if that's rumor, but it just seems ridiculous that there's so many laws on there. We're passing chicken laws, we're passing all these things, it's just, it's nuts. So I'd like to see maybe some more positive things happen rather than restrictive laws. Thank you.
Thanks, Adele. Anyone else have a vote? Leonard, how did that?
About fifteen minutes ago, I got a clip from a newspaper with regard to parking regulations in the R1, R2, I don't know if R3 was there, I think the store district, with the allotment of two cars per family, that you could buy extra stickers for $10 a sticker or whatever it was. I personally have three vehicles. Valerie doesn't have one yet, what she's shooting to get, that's four. My neighbor across the street, Dr. Plyer, he has a car, his wife has a car, his daughter has a car, and his son has a car. Son doesn't live there all the time, but any of the case, that's the case. Linda Fredericks, who lives on the other side of me, has a son with a car, two daughters that both have cars. They don't both live there, but they often stay there for extended periods of times, and Linda has a car herself. Now, please, if I'm off base on this, I only scanned through this a few, a short while ago, I don't really understand what is the intention. It's unfortunate that a lot of the cars are now on the village streets because our buddies up here at the college removed their parking lots, okay? But you have people that habitate in buildings in the village that have cars that need a place to park. We pay a village tax, that goes to our roads for repair. We need places to park the cars. The streets were designed correctly or incorrectly to have a double flow of cars and two cars on either side. And these streets were designed with specifications, take a number, 25 years ago. There were far fewer cars by the same token, they were plain simply far fewer people. You can see just by the massive amounts of traffic, when the weed pickers come up or any kind of, whether it be the, out at the fairgrounds, the festivals there, but there, we all know that the population is increasing. So I don't really know where the expectation is that these cars will be placed. You don't want them in the front yard setback, we have yards in the back. Are we going to fill them up with cars? The geography of some of the, of the barses in the village of New Falls do not allow that to be a place to park. If you're complaining about parking on Oakwood and Grove, tell the churches to get rid of their cars. I don't know what the answer is. Widen the streets. Of course, you'd have to cut down all the trees and move each curb back three feet, then you'd have plenty of room. In Australia, the streets are wide. They did good planning ahead of time. So unfortunately, we have a problem here, but I don't know what's going to do with all the cars. So, I mean, some kind of intelligent decision has to be made. I will tell you, and it's funny, I almost laughed at Dr. Plyer when he was telling us about a study that was done in France with alternate side of the street parking. People drive faster down the streets with alternate side of the street parking. Remove the cars from the streets, they're going to drive even faster. It's unfortunate that many of the people park two feet out from the curb, and that really narrows the street. I mean, one of the things they need to concentrate, one of my tenants has recently had the whole side of his car wrecked, and I said, "But you didn't have your car against the curb where it belonged. Your front was sticking out." I mean, it's ideal for the local body shop, but it's, it's still, I don't know what we're going to do. But something to, to essentially ban the parking of these streets. Please keep in mind the stigma that has been given to so many college students for so many things. They bring $160 million in this area. There's no township around that has nine keeps or easement that continues to survive as well as we do. You want to chase them to another college, keep it, keep it in mind. You start having empty stores and problems in that way, but people need places to park. I don't know what's the answer is, but
Go ahead, Seth.
Well, I'll make an announcement. At one o'clock tomorrow, we are having a conversation here on this very topic because we do need a solution.
I understand.
And a lot of our, excuse me?
All right.
A lot of our residents who live on many of our residential streets do not even park in front of their house, let alone park four cars in front of their house. So we have a major problem. There are also concerns that have been expressed for a long time by the business community, and hopefully tomorrow we will be able to have an intelligent, thought-provoking conversation as to how to solve parking issues, not just for businesses, not just for people coming to shop, but for our residents. We, the mayor signed a letter to the president of the college asking for a moratorium while construction is going on in terms of parking permits being required at SUNY. And they, very nicely, we were told that the college has its parking policies. And so this is a community problem which tomorrow, hopefully, some good ideas will come out, some thought-provoking, and we'll try and look at this from an entire community situation, both for helping our businesses, but also keeping in mind that those people who own property in this community have a right to park also. So, one o'clock here tomorrow, I invite you all to come with good ideas.
Anyone else for public comment? Jonathan?
First, a little bit of parking. I think we should absolutely do away with the alternate side of the street parking, and that would add double the amount of spaces like we used to have. But you guys, you know, you think you really know what you're doing, and you did away with any side of alternate side of the street parking, and of course now we have a problem. So just return it to the way it was. It was flying for forty, fifty, sixty years, seventy years since cars have been in the village. It'll still be okay, and it's safer for the sidewalks. Second law concerns me greatly is that with all the lawsuits that the village is now facing, you have the water problems on Plains Road, Jason's lawsuit, tenant landlord legislation, there'll be a lawsuit. If they're going to do the wetlands law, which I don't know if you're going to do, there'll be another lawsuit. I will, the bag law, if you pass it, I'll probably file with Article 78, just for the element, because I don't think it's right. I really, I really believe that, but I'm just saying. And plus, there are so many other lawsuits. I am so concerned that you as a village, and I'm, it's my village too, I'm part of the village, we're going to lose our insurance. Why would our insurance company want to keep us as a client if we're irresponsibly creating laws that the residents are constantly filing the Articles 78s and contesting because they're just not fair? And by the way, I've never seen, if you don't, I've never seen the village board in one year, a year and a half, attempt to legislate so many laws that are just unnecessary and are not, they're just not required. They're just not. So I'm concerned that when that insurance company drops us as a, as a client, as a village, who are we going to go to? We're going to go to another insurance company. Maybe the insurance company that we presently have, we use them because their rates are reasonable. But once they drop us, because there are so many claims, we go on a computer system, they look us up, and they, just like when we go for, what are we insured for, we have too many claims, we run a clue. They know what we're doing, they know with everything, how many claims with every, they know. So they'll, so all of a sudden, we have a certain rate, now we're going to have to pay much higher, probably double or triple for insurance, to get insurance that can insure us. This is concerning me, because we have these lawsuits now that are up and coming, and ones that are currently, you're in the middle of fighting, and, and, and so that's costing us, I don't know, how many, hundreds of thousands of dollars. Now we want to do all this new legislation, oh, then we're going to have to pay for legislation that's going to cost us. Now we're going to have our insurance company drop us, oh, we're going to pay three, four times for insurance, if they even want to take us. We're at a horrible risk. You know, but listen, that's how, that's how insurance works. It's, it's an equation of risk management. We are not a good risk. We think that we're so important that we have to, you know, tally up and, and, and regulate everybody's lives to the extent where it's, it's hurting us, so that bothers me. The tenant landlord legislation bothers me because the more and more I speak to students, the more I speak to tenants that rent, and I know we have a rent evat there, do you? Your rents are going to go up substantially, because, well, it doesn't matter, but the rents are going to go up substantially. Because I, as a landlord, would have to now put together a rainy day fund to protect myself and my interests against this legislation, because if I ever get into trouble, because obviously, the building inspector works in, you know, for the mayor, and if he doesn't, if the building inspector doesn't listen to the mayor, probably have an abusive mayor, I'm in trouble. And so, and so people have to know that their rents are going to go up substantially, not only because of this law, but because our
Jonathan, are you going to wrap it up for me, Greg?
But I just have to finish one second. Because our, our, the cost of pretty much all of the schools is going to rise substantially. You live in the village, you pay town tax also. Town tax is going to go up, and they're going to go up this year substantially. This is year, this is just this year. Going forward, as the town
Jonathan, address us if you could.
You know, you let everybody address everybody, I'll stand over here, so I don't want to be told to look at you. I'm going to look at whoever I want in this room, and don't please dictate to me who I'm going to look at. You did it to me before, I didn't appreciate it, but you don't do it to other people. Please just try, just, I want to be treated equally and fairly. Now, let me just finish one second, thank you. So the tenant landlord legislation, I guarantee you, all of the rents are going to go up substantially, not only because of this law, but because of their abuse of legislation and because of lawsuits, and because of the loss of their insurance company. On top of the fact that in this law, it's written that basically, the tenants were going to lose their fourth member rights, because the building inspector has their rights to go to their premises at any, any Sunday with if they have a bomb hanging out or something that's not proper, is it the building inspector's job to have to now call the police because he sees something? If he doesn't call, maybe he's held liable, responsible, he didn't say anything. Maybe there's a candle on the floor, because they have to call, you know, I don't know, whatever it is, the tenants are going to lose. And me as a landlord, and we have two houses, me as a landlord, as a property owner, as someone that has my business here, I have a horrible taste of living in New Falls. I'm going to be honest with you, most people I speak to, people that I know, they own property, they own businesses, they're so sick and tired of this atmosphere that this board has created over the past year and a half. It's unbelievable, people want to get out of here. You know who wants to stay here? Certain renters that want everything coming to them for nothing. Certain renters. You know, I don't want, I'm not, you know, I'm just saying, that's what's going to be here.
Bring it to closing.
It's going to be a town of all renters that can't afford to be here, because this is going to become like a Star's Day. It's going to be so expensive to live. So I'm very upset with this tenant landlord tenant legislation. I'm very upset with all this different legislation that you're attempting to legislate. I know you don't care, I know you're going to do it anyway, and there are going to be lawsuits anyway, and I know, and our taxes are going to go up, and I know you don't care, because if you did, you wouldn't do this. And honestly, Ariana, I'm upset that you don't stand up for this, for this, right? I'm upset that you don't stand up, I'm upset that you don't stand up, and I'm upset that you don't stand up. Because to me, the element of the room is, is that we have a mayor that's trying to be very, what's the word, revengeful by putting this legislation together. Tom, you'd like to see the students like Terry Duncan move out of the village? Because you moved, you moved, right, across the street from the firehouse, right in the middle of the main artery where the kids go to school, and you don't, you're not happy about that. It really irritates you, I know it does, the noise irritates you. That's why there's going to be another legislative law, a noise ordinance. They're not telling you about it, but it's coming right up the alley.
Jonathan? Do you want to speak to who people want to speak?
The thing is, you do have a lot of things that are really unkind, un-nice, and it's creating people like me who want to get the hell out of here as far as I can. This is not the New Falls I came to live in, this is not the gentle, nice little town. This should be a board, a nice, gentle board, that wants to do positive, gentle, nice, positive things for our village residents, not to put laws on them and shackle them and dictate to them how to run their lives. This is not, this is not a independent or a town that's geared towards encouraging independent thought. It's now become a town that's run by a group
Jonathan, you need to wrap it up, Jonathan, because
That's what I have to say, there's so much more I would say, there's so, I'm so
There's plenty of other public comments. Thank you, Jonathan.
You're right.
Don, and then Adele.
Just real quickly, are you going to be doing Adam Fifteen for the report from Dave Plauser on the water report?
Yeah, tonight we're going to start a conversation.
In comparison to different options, the time estimate for bringing in a modular treatment plant to treat Waltham River water is much longer than I would have expected. It's like thirty-nine to forty-six months or something. It's a long, long time, and it says ten, twelve months for permitting. But these are things you bring on the back of a truck and drop in place and hook up. So I'm, if you, someone could ask Dave Plauser to break that down, because I'll be home watching on TV by that point. But that seems really a long, long time to drop a package plant in place, and the reason they're saying in their rationale that's not a good option is it will take too long. And the reason they're saying in their rationale, that's not a good option, is it will take too long. So I'm just curious if you can get an idea of why it takes so long? Because, um, that's my business, and they sell these things by saying it's plug and plug. So I'm just, I'm sure there might be a good reason, but if you could just ask the question, uh, it's a good question to ask.
Thanks, Don.
I, I planned on it, just so you know, I was already thinking about that, so thank you.
And Johnny, you're next?
Um, I'm just curious to know, several meetings ago, a bunch of people asked questions.
Who's emailed today?
I got an email today-
You should've gotten any of them.
-answering my questions.
Yeah, the ones that I could answer, was it sent out today, or?
I, I-
It was not sent out today?
When is it being sent out?
I'm sure it will be sent out tomorrow, I personally don't have the answers, it's, the I was-
No, it's fine, no, no, I'm, I gave all the answers, so it's, if you, sorry, I thought it was being sent out today, it's being sent out tonight.
Oh, because what, because what said was that these, none of these laws were getting voted on until all the questions were answered.
Mm-hmm.
So it just was clear that that-
But we haven't had a conversation, we've had public hearings, but we haven't had a conversation about what we heard at the public hearings, so. Any other public comment? Uh, John, and then Amy.
Um, I just wanted to actually agree with the previous speaker about one thing, that it is extremely expensive to live in this town. It becomes increasingly more so each year. And as a renter who looks forward to becoming a homeowner, New Falls is a very difficult place for that to happen. I personally don't think that the legislation that we're discussing is going to make living here any cheaper. Um, I do imagine that whatever costs are incurred as a result of the landlord law will get passed down to the renter, I'm, I'm certain of it. And the reason I'm certain of that is because every cost that rises is passed down to the tenant. It could be water, electricity's included, if the rent goes up, with home heating, whatever, like, it all ends up back on the tenant. So be it, that's the nature of being a tenant. That being said, I don't think that increasing costs is a justification for not protecting tenants in a way that perhaps they haven't had protections in the past. I don't think it's useful or helpful to attack any individuals by name to suggest that some legislation is done out of revenge, or because a certain person doesn't want someone walking by their house. And I like to think that that's not why my elected officials run for office. Knowing some of you personally, I, I know that that's not the reason you run for office. There are landlords in this town who do incredibly heinous things to their tenants. Um, I would never mention them by name. Some of them solicit their tenants from out of luck. Some of them barge into their tenants' homes like the Gestapo, unannounced, wake their tenants from slumber for things like having an intimate partner in their home. So, I would not name those names or those people, but I would say that any protection designed to help groups of people who are commonly marginalized, groups of people who are commonly at the bottom of things, when the costs go up, runs downhill to them. Those people need protections, they deserve protections. Some of them are raising families, not all of them are students. Yes, it's true, many of those tenants will not be able to become residents of the village or the town in New Falls because it is far too expensive and unlearned. But that does not mean that because they're tenants, they don't deserve protection under the law. So, as I've said before, I'll say again, I applaud this board for looking after the concerns of the tenants in this community who deserve to have a voice, so thank you.
Thank you, John. Amy, and then Adele.
Okay, I have a couple of points, start there real quick. Um, first one is, I wanted to take a moment to thank Sally for arranging a parking meeting tomorrow at one o'clock, here, right in this room. That is the type of community cooperation that I'm looking for, giving different parties an opportunity to raise their concerns and their opinions, and hopefully, everybody could get along really, really well. And instead of bickering all day, we may, even if we find ten percent of the solution tomorrow, to me, that will be a very big accomplishment, and I appreciate it very, very much. And I, from what I understand, a lot of people will be attending tomorrow, and if there are people watching tonight, or people who are, I do encourage them to come, because unfortunately, and it's not just the village, it's at the school, it's at the town, our leaders think, somehow they think, that if we don't come to meetings, and we don't voice our concerns, and if, and if we don't come, that we don't care. And I just wanna say that's just not true. There are so many people that care, especially business owners, but because of the nature of a small business, many business owners are working in their businesses tomorrow. So, I just wanna kind of set it up and say, that if we don't get a lot of people tomorrow, we can make every effort to do some interviews and bring you data, however we have to do it, to get all those voices involved. And I don't want anyone to take it personally, or any boards to think that certain people don't care about things because they don't come to meetings, because they're just, normal people just, most of the time don't have the time.
Heard that this weekend.
I mean, I'm, I'm a citizen, I'm a mother, I'm a business owner, and I knock myself out to come to these meetings, to go to the town, to go to the school. I'm, I'm everywhere, I was already at another meeting tonight. And it's, it's because there's so much going on, and so much of it does directly impact me, my business, my family, and I make the time to do it. But, but many people can't even make the time to do it, or they don't have the interest or the capacity. These, these meetings are very long, and no offense or anything, but they get a little boring at times. So we can't expect everybody to come to the meetings. So that's my first comment. Um, my second comment is, um, for Rebecca, I see under new business that you're looking for crosswalks and better signage, and I applaud you for that. I think we need more crosswalks in the village. I'd like to ask you, if you could please, I know you live on the same street, but I do, on North Chestnut, I think we desperately need another crosswalk on the corner where Horse Feathers is. There's near accidents there daily. You cannot see cars coming, you cannot see cars going. My own children are on bicycles and walking, and the friends, and the buses drop the kids off over there. And it's kind of a blind spot, just because of the way people park, and, and what's going on, everybody's in a rush. And I would really appreciate it if you guys could take a look at that as well, as long as you're doing that, because, you know, let's just make it, if we're gonna do it, let's make it safe. Um, because that's one thing I think we can all agree on, is safety. So those are my, my first two points. Um, my third point is about the landlord-tenant legislation. Um, I know this is going on for a while, and I actually wanna thank you guys, because it's really been a while. And everybody has a lot to say, and there's a lot going on with it, and you guys have really been very patient and listened to a lot of people. I'll very, very quickly say that I was thinking about the idea of there being a blackout, or some kind of problem with water for everybody. And then all of a sudden, all the landlords would, I guess, have to put the tenants in hotels. And I'm just thinking like about lenos, and like, how are you gonna, where are you even gonna find three hundred rooms for all these kids? I mean, I only have like ten kids, I think it'd be my living room if they had two. But not everybody's in the same, same situation as I am, because John only has, you know, several apartments. But we don't have hotels here to put people in. Where, where are they gonna go? And I would imagine, that's just land, I mean, there's, how many landlords, Adele would know? There must be, I don't know, a hundred landlords, two hundred landlords that, that rent out apartments or rooms in the village? So, I'm just kind of feeling like it might not really be all that realistic with the act of God thing, because, like, if the electric's out, everybody's gonna wanna run into a hotel, especially if it's out for five days or something. And they're just, we just don't have the capacity here in New Falls, and I can't imagine that we'd start busing tenants to New Jersey for hotel rooms. And I don't know how that's gonna work with the paying, because I'm not gonna be giving my credit cards to any tenants to take them to a hotel. So I don't know if the village is gonna pick up the tab and bill the landlords later. I just, you know, realistically, I'm just really wondering how it's going to work. You know, I know you can't answer, so, go answer me when, when you can. And the other part of the landlord kind of thing that bothers me is that I just don't see it being even-handed. When you don't have a set fee, and it could be forty dollars for one person, four hundred dollars for another person, and four thousand for another person, I think you, you really kind of set up a situation that could lead to abuse. It could lead to, to anything, it could be a building inspector in a bad mood, it could be anything. And, and I think that if we're gonna move forward as a village, I think we all have to work together to be fair, and to follow the golden rule, and to treat others how they would like to be treated themselves. I am making a very large effort to open myself up to every kind of person for any kind of conversation about village issues, because I believe that without being able to work together cooperatively, we don't have a village. We're probably not going to have a village, because we may go bankrupt, and lose our village, and then we won't even have a choice how we wanna be, or what we wanna do. And as a mother and as a parent, I'd like to get these issues out of the table, and work them out in a way that maybe you guys don't have to get sued, and maybe everybody could be comfortable, because the landlords that I talk to, they all wanna do the right thing, they care about their tenants, they wanna do good things for the community. Landlords came up to me and said, Amy, we wanna do nice things for, for the village, what can we do? And I gave them some ideas, and, and maybe they'll do them, I don't know. But again, I've said this a million times, the nicer we make our park, the nicer our roads are, the nicer our sidewalks are, the better our parking facilities are, the cuter our shops are, the more flowers we have, the nicer everybody is, the more people are gonna wanna come live here with their families. And, you know, landlords are gonna sell their houses to families, and then you're gonna have a lot of families, and you're going to very naturally take care of what you consider a problem. And the best thing we could all do is agree upon making our village a better place. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Adele, yeah?
Just a comment. The gentleman behind me talked about all of these problems that he may have had, or friends have had, and the heinous, certain number of heinous landlords that are in this village. I will tell you that there is nothing that I know that he mentioned that this law will do anything about. If anything, your privacy will be more invaded, there will be more people counting who's sleeping in your bed than your landlord, and you will find that this will not help you. And, you know, and of course, I have to add to that, there are also heinous tenants. It's not just certain landlords. So, but I don't think that anything that is mentioned is addressed here in this law. So, even if you, there needs to be a landlord law that protects the things that you were talking about, because it's not the one.
Thanks, Adele. Any last public comment? John?
I, I, I felt, um, I felt attacked by some, a person in this room by vilifying landlords and mentioning all kinds of accusations, that he had a problem, or his friend had a problem. This is not the place to air your accusations. We have a court of law to air your accusations. We have a judge that will rule and mediate, that is their decision, and decide if the accusations are correct or not. But to willy-nilly spew out accusations and vilify landlords who are trying to do the best they can for the people that sleep under their roofs. I care very much about my tenants. I care about them as if they were my children myself. I take very, very personal attack. I do say that I understand you might have had problems, and I understand your friends might have had problems, but let me tell you about the problems when I had heroin addicts in my, in my apartment. Let me tell you about the problems when I had, when I had tenants leaving bags of garbage and open beer cans all over the place and creating infestation. Let me tell you about the problems when, when, when tenants say, oh, I don't have the money to pay the rent, and then in fifteen days, oh, I don't have the money to pay the rent, and in twenty, and then all of a sudden, you realize they're professional people. When I say professional, they're professionals, they know how to stay in an apartment for three months until you can kick them out. Let me tell you about so many other issues that, you're not supposed to have animals, you bring animals-
Jonathan, if you could try to address us.
I'm just saying, I'm gonna address you. There's nothing that gets me more upset. I never go around to the, in this community, and go talking about tenants that are bad. If I have a problem with them, as they say, I take them to court. But I don't talk about them behind their backs. It's individual, it's the second time you do it, if you do it again, I'm telling you, it's absolutely disgusting.
Jonathan, Jonathan, excuse me.
I'm telling you something, you are a disgusting- That's all I have to say.
Come on.
And I'll come, I'll look at you, because you are unbelievable.
Jon, Jonathan!
That's how I, that's how I feel about this people.
Jonathan, leave it at that.
Unbelievable.
I'm going to do a closing public interview.
I'll second that, all in favor?
All right, we have people talking about that.
Jonathan, excuse me. Excuse me. I apologize. All right. I hope there was no more public comment, seemed like a good place to end it. If you could leave your materials with us, I'd just hand it to the clerk.
Well, don't materials, you get in the minutes?
No, we don't generally, we don't put this stuff in the minutes. If you could make copies of that for the trustees?
Sure.
All right, um, we have-
Resolution, while applying for any acting-
Well, hold on, hold on, hold on. Before we start making motions, there are several things that people are here to talk about, so I'd like to get that done first, and starting off with our auditors. You wanna join us? And I'll be right back, I just have to get more-
Very patient auditors?
Yes, two very patient auditors. Yeah. Hey, uh, Landis, if you gotta talk, could you head in the hallway? Is it okay if I proceed? Talk outside, yeah, I'm gonna run down my mailbox, so please start without me.
Yeah, I think that one is mine.
I'll just move, change the order of the day, which is allowing the auditors, we're gonna move the agenda. I'll move the, we change the order of the day, and then finally, they just come up.
They're already, yeah. Well, Prince- Oh, the legislative business.
We're not doing the consent agenda, so I'm changing, I'm moving to change the orders of the day.
Say.
Yeah.
Do it.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah.
Aye, aye, right.
So, I'll proceed, and I'll keep it brief, I know you have a big evening. So we've concluded the audit, we've concluded the audit. Um, your financial statements are bound in these, uh, they contain many things, approximately eighty pages, consists of- Yes, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, if people would like to call, please go outside. You know, we all sat quietly, heard what everybody wanted to say, and now, be respectful to our auditors.
Thank you.
Sir.
No, it's okay. Um, the financial statements contain, most notably, uh, the auditor's report. And we have issued an unmodified opinion on your financial statement, which is, as you're probably aware, often referred to as the auditor's clean opinion. That your financial statements present a fair and a clean verdict, that's what you're hoping for. So, having said that, there's also an MDNA, which is Management's Discussion Analysis, a number of financial statements related to the general fund operate, uh, which is principally your operating fund, as well as village-wide financial statements. What I'll do is, in the interest of brevity, I'll ask Leslie to talk about the general fund, which is basically the operating component of the village. Since there's been a lot of discussion tonight about the shape of the village, we'll tell you how it looks. Thank you.
Everybody has a report in front of them, just gonna refer you to page forty-nine. Um, this is the general fund's comparative schedule of revenue expenditures and changes in fund balance budget versus actual. This page consists of four columns, your original budget, which is your voter-approved budget, your final budget, which includes any budget amendments or budget transfers, your actual results, and your variance between final budget and actual. Total revenues for the final budget were two point six four million. Actual results came in at two point five six million, leaving you with a slight shortfall in revenues of about eighty-four thousand dollars. Total expenditures, final budget were two point eight nine million. Actual results were two point four one million, leaving you with a budgetary variance of four hundred and eighty thousand. So the final budget and the original budget, the village anticipated to use two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars of fund balance. Actual results came in at a net increase in fund balance of a hundred and fifty-two thousand. Add that to your beginning of the year, the village ended the year with one point, uh, three million dollars of fund balance. And that is broken down, if you refer to page forty-eight.
Before you go on, Leslie, just- Before you go on, Leslie, just to reiterate, you were expecting to lose, use $244,000 this year, but you actually had income of $150,000. So it was a positive variance.
The $400,000.
Uh, yeah.
Total difference.
Yeah, basically. Yeah, that's true. And it added to your fund balance. And that's what Leslie will put right now.
So fund balance is broken down into three categories at 1.3. You have your restricted fund balance of $369,000, which includes various reserves the village established, assigned fund balance of $244,000, and your unassigned fund balance of $653,000. And that represents about 22% of your next year's budget, which is a pretty good percentage to be at.
Pretty healthy.
Yes. Too healthy, please.
Pretty healthy. You know, you have to balance the needs of the village and taxpayers' desires. You know, I would say it's pretty good with a lot of the contingent costs that are out there coming down the line. So I'm glad you erred on the side of good.
But not dumped too hard.
So let me just, would you just recap? So there was a shortfall of $84,000.
On the revenues.
Yes, eighty-four revenues.
On the revenues.
Yes.
But then there was a expenditures came in at a positive variance on expenditures. Positive variance of 100 and.
Four hundred eighty thousand.
Four hundred eighty thousand. Leaving us then with a fund balance of 1.3, approximately $1.3 million, which is approximately 22% of nature. Thank you.
Of which there are three fund balances.
Same.
Right, of which unassigned represents 20%.
Twenty-two percent. Twenty-two percent. Unassigned, unassigned represents 22%.
It represents money that you can use.
Now I understand.
Unrestricted intentions. So I think what I'll do is, again, we also issue a management letter, which are comments or recommendations. What I'll share with you is that we'd have to inform you if there are any material weaknesses in internal controls, and there were not. Nor did we identify any significant deficiencies in internal controls. We did not identify. There are a couple other best practice comments that we've issued. I won't go through those now. You can read those. They're not serious consequences. Towards the back of this report is some required communications. I'll just take a moment to hit on a few of those. I think on page six, you understand what our responsibility is to render an opinion on your financial statements. On page seven, financial statements contain estimates. You have receivables. I hope you collect every done. But there's also assumptions, actuarial assumptions involved in post-employment benefits. You've heard the term OPI before. So those are estimates. We'd have to inform you if there were significant difficulties encountered in performing the audit and we did not have any difficulties. Or if there were any disagreements with management and we did not have any disagreements with management. Lastly, we affirm that we are independent with respect to the village and management of the village as well, which is necessary for us to issue an opinion, to be independent in appearance and in fact. Doesn't mean they can't call us up and ask us questions. They do, Nancy does whenever she has a question on something. We encourage them. So that's what we wanted to share with you tonight.
Question?
Yes.
But before I may ask the question, I'd like the record to show that once again, our treasurer has done an outstanding and fabulous, commendable job. And I hope that we all agree that that will be by acclamation conveyed to her by the mayor.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Everyone works at this.
I know we don't use encumbrances. And sometimes maybe our fund balance results from not encumbering, such as we budgeted four generator, two years in a row. If that money were encumbered, it would just roll. And from what you've said, you're recommending that you go into a system of encumbrances, but right now we don't have the software to do that. Do you recommend we buy the software to do it using some of our unanticipated fund balance?
I would leave that to.
No, you do recommend.
I mean, it's a helpful tool for village, for the village treasurer to know what is out there. I would recommend that. I'm an accountant.
But I mean, this is unusual in that we don't encumber.
I would say so. Would you agree that's a.
Yeah, I mean, government's still accounting standards.
Budgets that I, municipal, I've worked with do encumber and then roll.
Kind of keeping track of it.
Yeah, you keep a better track of it. So could we ask Nancy to tell us and make a recommendation for a software program that would meet the needs? And I know that, you know, part of this is just a matter of buying it.
And a matter that we just replaced it a few years ago. It may have been enough time now that it's worth investing.
It's not the system.
I was shocked to learn that we could not get something off the shelf that would not handle.
There's a lot of systems.
Katie, would you make a note to ask Nancy?
There's no nonprofit entity that I've ever worked for that did not have an encumbrance procedure. Always knew what your encumbrances were because if you didn't, then how would you know what really could genuinely roll over to me?
It also makes it very difficult when, say, formulating budgets and departments have money left over. And I know that the mayor has stressed that they buy ahead with, you know, that would be a better way of reflecting that. So could we, could we ask Nancy for the November meeting to make a recommendation to us to buy the software in consultation with Leslie to get this, when we've talked about this before and we just haven't done it, I think it's time to do it.
We're happy to share any information that we have from other clients. Any other questions?
It's a pleasure doing business.
Thank you very much. It's our pleasure.
Always a pleasure.
Thank you very much. Thank you for calling. My pleasure. See you next year.
Leslie.
Good to see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
I would demand a five-minute break.
Yeah. We're going to take a five-minute recess because an hour and a half is about as much as a human being can last in a meeting. I thought that John and Don were going to stay for the plastic bag training, but I think, are the three of you all here for water? Okay. So we'll do that next. So we'll do that first in five minutes. Here, here. Which page are we starting on here?
What page?
No, I was just joking.
This is just for David.
Yeah.
First thing. Is that?
All right.
First of all, Dave's going to give us a quiz to see who read the report.
Well, my post-its over here. I asked that this item be put on the agenda. And I did so because at the last minute, of course, we had a very brief period of time to consider only a couple of related issues. And I'm growingly concerned as we move into the last part of October, that we have now approximately two years to not only finish the business of this phase two, but we need to have decisions made. We need to work with the New York City Department of Environmental Protection to get funding for decisions that are made. We still have design and then implementation. And I'm concerned that we move this agenda expeditiously. We've had the report in hand, not for a long, long time, but now for 23 days. And while 23 days may not be enough to read, if you're reading one page a day, it might be enough time to have at least scanned the documents and to have read the executive report. I have had ongoing conversations with personnel and DEP, and they would be prepared to meet with us in approximately a month if we can make our decisions and be prepared to go to them with a request for funding for whatever the alternatives or the options that this board feels are the best options to pursue for exactly this purpose, which is to have a backup water supply for a 10-week period in 2016 and then again in 2017. It may be that there would be other periods of time during which there would be shutdowns as well, but those are the two that are, at least have been announced up until now. And I, for one, would like us to be ready well in advance of 2016 with our backup water supply. So with that, we've asked Dave to come and to present to the board a briefing on the various options that are on the table and for the board to be able to interact with him or ask him any questions. So, Dave, would you?
I'm asking to get a Reader's Digest version of this. I hope I helped get you out of here before midnight. I'll do my best. I want to do two things. I want to summarize just the components of the report and then review the recommendations that we made and kind of give you the rationale behind our recommendations. We looked at five potential water sources, two surface water sources, two groundwater sources. We also looked at the connection to the Tomaloids water supply. We also looked at programs to reduce the water demand, which I think is an important aspect of this. The water demand is projected to be 610 gallons per minute. We took a look at the last 12 years of usage, found what the linear relationship was. It was about 2.5% per year increase. I talked to Blue and Blue said that that's about right and it's still increasing. I was wondering if the water rates had dampened that, but he was saying that there's been enough that's been coming online and it's still increasing. The first source was existing reservoirs. Our job is to figure out, try to project how much it will yield and if there is any present operations that could be enhanced. The yield of the reservoirs that we came up with, depending on the shutdown period, was 158 gallons per minute during the October to December shutdown to 225 during the spring, January through March shutdown. That's a conservative projection. We used normal precipitation years and then the 20% safety factor on that. The improvements that we noted were flashboards. These are boards that are put in the spillways of the reservoirs and you can store more water with those flashboards. And you can operate flashboards and be able to manage the storage better. We also looked at sediment removal. Hurricane Irene and tropical storms leave quite a bit of sediment in the reservoirs. Taking that sediment out, putting it in the flashboard will increase the storage on the reservoirs by about 30%. We also were recommending that we model the watershed so we have a better way of predicting what the input will be into the reservoirs based on the type of storm. The second source is the Waukele River.
I would like you to mention the notion that you developed on the improvement of the management of the reservoir system by piping water from the upper reservoir to the lower reservoir when there are projected significant rainfall events.
The modeling is part of that. The other part is gauging the intakes of the reservoirs to be able, right now, there's daily, I think there's actually twice daily strolls up to the reservoirs to see what the levels are. This would have some gauging involved in the control house that the water treatment plant would be able to tell where the levels are and record that.
So Dave, doing all of those things at the reservoir, what would you expect the yield to be?
The yield should be greater just because we're increasing the storage by 30%. I really don't know what the yield will be with that. For conservative purposes, I took it projected without.
Let's just say then 30% would take the October to December to 200. That's 30%. In the spring, it would be take this to about 275 now. Okay. And in the summer, you didn't give a summer figure?
Just because the two shutdown periods that the DEP projected were the October through December and then the January through March.
They would not, they are assuring us that they would not do a shutdown during the lowest rainfall periods.
It's also the highest demand in the city in the summer.
There is, there is a, there is a peculiarity in demand.
The summer tourism.
Yeah.
The second source is the Waukele River. There was a study that was done on that in the phase one. They looked at several potential ways of taking that source, doing the withdrawal. There's ample supply. They did the study to figure out what drought conditions would be and what the lowest flow would be. There's definitely ample supply there. We met with the health department back in January to find out what was going to be necessary to qualify this as a water supply. They said, we really have to have at least one year's sampling each month before we can determine that. We've been doing that. Just got September's, I believe, a couple weeks ago.
So we're past a year of sampling now?
No, we started in January.
We started in January.
January. So in January, we will, okay.
We found that the quality does differ by season. It's pretty good quality when there's ice on. It's not so good in the summertime. You can see the degradation. It is treatable. It's very treatable. It takes enhanced treatment requirements to be able to treat it. The PALL system that is being proposed up at the water treatment plant, looks like that equipment will treat it without additional enhancements. The health department will want to see a pilot test on that before they would accept that equipment. But if we can believe what the manufacturer says, it looks like that equipment would treat it.
So Dave, that's the third section, the bottom section in the.
Actually, you were way ahead of me, Rebecca.
Oh, sorry.
I'll get there, though.
But, but yes.
The options that were in the phase one report were all temporary options. They were in for the 10-week period. They were taken out. They were sited in the floodway. They were right in the place where they needed to be, up eight feet above the ground level. They were close to Springtown Road. That adds a lot of risk, especially during the shutdown period, times late fall and early spring. You've seen flooding there. So you have to have more fuel stored. You have to make sure that you've got all the equipment up above the flood elevations. Being able to get to it to service, even if you do have that above, sometimes Springtown Road is not so passable. So that was an issue, an increased risk. The reach your biggest downside to this where the schedule was very long. We looked at the schedule. It was in the phase one report and tried to see what has been done since that time. I believe we have about. I believe we have about four months here out of that schedule and it's still like three years to be able to implement that.
Dave, a question was asked earlier by Don, and I'll ask it because now I'm curious. It seems that that shouldn't take very long as an option because you're rolling in a mobile plant off the back of a truck. What's, what's the holdup for this option? Why does this one take so long when it seems on its face it should be one of the briefer?
There's a lot of permits there. FEMA's 101, the Corps of Engineers is another.
So it's their timeline to get the permits that really holds it up, not the getting the equipment there?
So it said that in the report in terms of the permits, but I was thinking, you know, for 10 to 12 months for permitting, this is not, we're not doing this of our own accord, for instance. I, you know, we're not just saying we want to change our water supply. We're being forced to change our water for these two 10-week periods. So I guess I just have in my mind, I imagine that they would be able to address us because we're time-sensitive, like the same way that we do as a government board where there are things that are time-sensitive so we can address them sooner in order to take care of it. So do you think that there is a possibility we could get those permits in a shorter timeframe?
I looked at the permit timeframe, Arianna, and I agreed with that just from my experience for Corps of Engineers permits more than anybody else. The feds are really hard to move. They do try, but they have certain periods that is allowed to process the application. And I've had projects where there's a 45-day window, I get a letter back day 43, and then we start to clock again. And it's not that they're trying to do this. I can tell you, they are understaffed.
I imagine so, yeah.
So I really looked at the permitting time in there and I didn't think it was out of line.
But if DEP put pressure on them?
That's what I was wondering, yeah.
I asked DEP if they could and they said they would. I mean, they certainly would make a guarantee or something.
Look, I mean, DEP has a lot to lose here. And so it seemed to me they would be more willing to put the pressure on to speed the process up because, as Arianna said, it was sort of an emergency.
It is, and it's also temporary.
Well, it may or may not be temporary.
What they were proposing was all temporary. As soon as you use it, you take everything out because it's floodway again. And that really increases the cost. As an example, there was a cost in there of 5 point some.
5.2 or 3 million.
Yeah.
To 7.3. And that 2 million is you're going back in and you're rebuilding your platform, you're doing your piping, you're bringing the trailers in. There's a six-month minimum lease on the trailers. It's surprising how that adds up. But it was really temporary because it was in the floodway.
When we began this discussion?
Right.
Okay, we weren't talking temporary. We were talking about community water supply and getting all the reservoir altogether and that was what DEP wanted.
Only the meaning of shogun.
Yeah. Yes, not our reservoir.
Not ours.
Yes, shogun, yeah.
So it seems to me, one of the first questions to be answered, have they changed their mind about temporary with permanent solution? Because that orders cost greatly.
Their preference is to have something permanent because if they have a third shutdown, they don't want to come back in for another $2 million.
So these costs are based on temporary, not permanent.
Well, but what about this, the 5.7, the pumping at the Springtown roadside with the new permanent, with a permanent raw water main on Mountain Rust?
It has a permanent water main, but they take all of the equipment out.
The equipment still gets.
That's why I asked the question, Arianna, because, I mean, it seems to me there's a big difference here.
Absolutely.
It's in the floodway. You're not supposed to build in the floodway.
You can build Burma.
Not easily with FEMA. You have to show that there's no increase in water level and no velocity increase.
This, like, one of the difficulties is that we're not dealing with one agency's requirement. You're dealing with FEMA requirements, Army Corps of Engineer requirement, Department of Health, Department of Environmental Conservation, and Historical Preservation. So you have five, a five-agency set and that doesn't mean that they're all coordinated. It certainly doesn't mean that they're all talking to each other.
Oh, yeah. I would think that they are not.
The problem, two things. Temporary permit has to be decided and then independent of that decision, DEP has a problem which we are trying to resolve for the community and for DEP and they have a responsibility here to get the permits they need.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
We, that's a no way.
Because we, we have not elected to do this. We've been told we have to do this.
Correct.
So if we're, if we have to do this, then all the agencies involved.
To respond.
Yeah.
Considering, you know, and it's not just.
Of course, of course, this doesn't mean they will. I know this, Tom.
It doesn't mean that they will. And then Dave was not making this up, by the way.
I know.
These, these data points primarily are coming from Phase 1. These data points are not primarily those that he devised. He went over them and tried to modify them with any later information they had. But this, this information comes primarily from the Phase 1 stone, not, not the following information.
Right, right.
So why don't we let Dave finish going through the list and we can talk about this in a broader context?
Well, I'd like to go through the options, talk about them one by one as a board. Yeah, definitely.
Okay. Well, I guess, was there anything else in the Waukele?
Public perception has got to be changed about drinking the Waukele River. I mean, that's an issue. It's not helped by riverkeeper. It is very treatable, but it's not perceived well.
With good reason.
Can we just put signs up saying? Do we put?
Don't swim here.
Don't touch this.
But I, but there's obviously a difference between treating something and drinking it versus swimming in it as is.
Untreated, yes.
I agree with you and I'm sure that we would all drink it if we had to.
Well, I think.
If we had to.
If we had to.
I'm sure I would.
In part, we created the image problem, if you will, but I've been assured by people that I know who know about water that it is eminently treatable and to be drawn.
And I'll go through the options and the pluses and the minuses back there on this other sheet. Source 3 was the sand and gravel groundwater supply. We looked at a lot of areas in these flats, also over on the other side of the thruway. Looking first for shallow gravel deposits that were high-producing. Didn't find those. Found a lot of clay. We found some seams of gravel and sand, but not anything substantial that produced a lot of water. We did the geophysical surveys to try to find the center of the Old River. Did that in three spots. We've used the center over here off of Springtown. Came up with about 40 gallons per minute and the water had a lot of magnet, manganese and iron in it, which is a treatable process. It's more expensive, but needs to be done. 40 gallons a minute is not really what we're looking for. We went on the transect on Plains Road at the Roars Pit. Went to the center of the Old River. We found 27 feet of really sediment, gravel, great gravel, water bearing. We found that as we pumped it, that the majority of the water was coming from a trough from Old River. The fault, kind of where the Old River was, also extended out into neighborhood. Appendix B is a hydro report. It's very detailed. We did a, two tests there. One was a step test to try to determine how much flow there was in that source. The second was the low yield test that's necessary to qualify it as a public water That was most plentiful site. We were able to show during the yield test that we can pump that 400 gallons a minute for the 10-week duration with caveat that because of the drawdown that's happening in the Plains Road neighborhood, there would be public water supply provided here. So that was part of the, part of the public. We connect that supply to the village system by going down Plains Road. And I've talked to someone with the Waukele Valley Rail Trail on the village property, but I wanted to see if they were interested in the water main being installed there. That would save the going around, so it'll, I can grow the curves, utilities. Plus, it's all railroad fill, so it's easy installation. They said they would certainly consider that. So that was.
We own it.
You own it?
We own it.
Yep. There's a booster pump station that needs to be installed to be able to meet the pressure that's down here in the lowest part of the village. The booster pump station was placed temporarily at the corner of Sojourner Tru Park. No acquisition required that way. We did look at another option as far as taking this well, going over and crossing under the Waukele River with a directional drill connecting now to the village main here, the intersection of Springtown. That turned out to be another permit was required and also another $400,000 in cost and also another, because of the permitting, the schedule extended. The fourth source that we looked at was bedrock. We had, initially, we had two sites that we were looking at. One was the Jam property, which was the property that was, the wells were located on that was going to supply the Park Point project late spring that went into litigation. So that is kind of off the table at this point. We did, these wells have been pumped. We know what the yield is. The excess yield there is about 40 gallons a minute, not what they were going to use. But we did go through the hydro report on that because it was available.
So where is, do you think, 20?
They have about 80 to 90 there and they're going to use about 40. So the excess would be 40. That would have been a nice connection because it's not too far to the Pango. The other one that we looked at was Luster Wells on this side of the thruway. There's eight wells on the property. They've been pumped three times, three projects have never moved. Started in 89 when the wells were installed. We know what the yield is on those. There's approximately 100 gallons per minute that is excess of what the new project plans to use, but it's going to be on that property, that's the Royal Berry Lodge Hotel inside Water Park project. That's presently in the DEIS stage in that DEIS, there is an alternative to provide the excess water to a town water district. There is a water district just on this side of the thruway that would have to be extended to include that property. The water main would come up from the well along Parities Lane down 299, connect by the Genesis diner. Fairly easy connection. There is a potential for more than 100 gallons per minute there. I found out that the hotel doesn't believe that they will be ready for operation by October of 2016, so we would be taking all of the water for that first shutdown period. That could be as much as 180 gallons. And we'll require a water district by the town. The one caveat in that is the two other, two previous tests for water quality turned out really good water there. The last one showed a high chloride content, which didn't make sense. Back in 89, one of its first tests, that there was chloride in the well, but it was not high. And that was right after the thruway build or salt shift. The second test in 2001 showed the chloride really had gone. So it's really surprised that they had a high chloride level. Planning on testing that again, to see what it is. It's a high chloride level, make extra treatment. They will be doing that within a month. The fifth source was the connection to the Tomaloy. That requires 6.2 miles of pipeline from the intersection of 9W and 299. Go on the south side of 299 where there's a lot of right-of-way, which is a good thing. You don't have to get easements on that. Would have to cross under the thruway. There's an existing sleeve there. Go up to Religer, down South Bud, connect to the village system by the storage tanks. The reason we can connect this source here is because it's 100 to 180 gallons a minute. If you look, you get 600 gallons a minute with that source, this, this pipe won't handle. There is, we do have some concern. There's, there's more study that needs to be made on that system if it becomes a contender. They had some issues with some disinfection byproducts at the end of the line some years ago. Some of those have been cleaned up. It looks like some of them are still very high. Also concerned about if they were to supply loopholes, they would double their production. Right now, they use part of the reservoirs to blend with part of the Hudson River water. There are times where the Hudson River had some salt issues and I'm just, we really would have to take a look at that closer. The other concern is the secondary growth impacts on the 299 quarter. You know, some initial discussions with Tomaloy Water and Sewer Commission that were not well-issued, so they're restricting access to that water.
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah, they laughed at me.
Yeah. The last thing we looked at. Bob Shepherd laughed at me in 2005 when I said that, too.
The last thing we really looked at was demand reduction. We were suggesting a water demand management program be instituted by the village and that's, that's an audit of the system. It kind of charts the water from the withdrawal to the use and tries to figure out where the excess or the unaccounted-for water is. Also looks at the meters. I know your meters are new now, but it's not an issue. It looks at the accounting. It looks at everything possible to try to pinpoint where the problems in the system are. The other program is a new construction program. I know that's an existing program that the village has and I know it's successful, too. Need to keep that up. Need to stress to the town that they need to keep that up, too. Need to keep that up, need to stress to the town that they need to keep that up, too. The final thing was a water conservation program, which we really need to start that now. It's going to require some public education, possible incentives, possible legislation. And I just suggest, if you look at the Concord, Massachusetts website, that's really good. It shows the community that's really committed to it, and look, Concord, Massachusetts. Need to consider that we're looking at costs that can be avoided. And we may not have the pressure to find more water when more development comes, if we conserve, conserve that without more infrastructure. That's particular water conservation. If we were to get that going and running, we should be able to get 5% reduction. It seems to vary from community between 5 and 15%. 5% here would mean 30 gallons a minute. Okay, I made it to this sheet of comparisons. The village reservoir improvements, that will provide 25% of the demand. Its cost is estimated at $376,000. The implementation time is six months. We need to get a dam safety permit from the D E C. I've talked with the engineer. I talked to him about doing temporary flashboards, and he has said that flashboards could be installed and they didn't have to be temporary if we proved that we could operate them without any safety concerns, so. The second is the Waukeah River. The construction cost estimates there are again from the Phase 1 report. The 610 gallons per minute can be provided easily by that source. The downside's on that, it's temporarily, it's temporarily not available for other shutdown periods unless we can find a way to make it permanent.
Is there a way to make it permanent?
We have to get the equipment out of the floodway.
You said that the improvements that we're making up at the water plant now should suffice to purify?
Yes, the pole system that's being...
Okay, so why would we need, other than pumping?
Pumping in the intake, and there's quite a bit of equipment that has to be down there close to the withdrawal.
And in order to get permits, it has to be out of, we have to have a flood contingency plan, or it has to be just completely out of the floodplain?
Right.
Where, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Where on Springtown Road would be...
It's close to where the old pump station was.
Just north of that, yeah.
They were raising, pad was going to be about eight feet above the ground there.
Where the boat line is?
Right.
As you go out to Springtown before you make the split?
Withdrawal would be here, there would be a line, the pumping equipment would be here.
So is the issue, the issue is that we need to be able to access it, even if it's raised above the floodplain?
To it.
What if we set up a system where we'd be able to access it?
Boats.
Yeah. I mean, I'm asking, I don't know what the answer to that question is, obviously.
My biggest concern is being able to make it permanent. Just because of the location and knowing what FEMA requires to be able to build in the floodway, it's a lot. I'm not sure how that would work. If you can move the equipment out of the floodway, but over here, the floodplain goes wayways back here.
Right, if you could get this, the pumping station moved over, out of the floodplain?
Right.
Okay, and then you would just pipe it to there?
Well, how close does it have to be, Dave? You're saying it has to be in the floodway?
There has to be some, your withdrawal point here has to have some equipment. I think that's a possibility.
So we couldn't just move it out of the floodway?
Not that part.
Right.
This would be much easier to prevent than the other equipment back here.
So the other equipment is what exactly, a pump to bring it up to Mountain West?
Standby generators.
Okay.
And now, the property that is out of the plain, that's all private?
Yes.
Outside on some of that, doesn't it?
Yes, so it's...
Open spaces.
This and this.
Right, open spaces to do...
But they're both in the floodplain?
No, part of them goes up.
Floodplain is right in here, everything this way.
Right.
Is in the floodplain.
Right, and just behind that.
Right there?
Yeah. I think that's, I'd have to look at another map, but...
I mean, I'd like to look into that further.
Another boundary is going down close to Springtown here.
So it is possible?
It's possible.
Just expensive and time consuming.
Right, permitting will still be an issue, I'm sure. Expense will be significant.
Do we have any idea of figures of what that expense might be?
We really don't, Arianna, first point.
We have 5.3 to 7.2 million, and that's just one phase.
That was the mobile.
That was for the mobile.
That's what I'm saying, that's less expensive than something permanent. So if we're looking at 10, 15, 16 million, 17 million for a temporary one?
I mean, but that's...
No, 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 no.
The 5.3 to 7.2, then the 6.3 and the 5.7 are three different.
So we're looking at 5.3, well, just for the low and high end. 5.3 to 7.2 million, somewhere in that range for temporary.
That's trailers. The 6.3 is you buy a package system that you put up and then you take down afterwards, again, taking everything out of the...
Well, or you leave it.
But the 5.7?
Or you leave it there. Sorry, Sal.
Then what are you recommending as a permanent?
I think you're saying there isn't enough here.
Yeah. And he hasn't costed that out.
Right, yeah.
That's what we need.
That's what we want, yeah.
Yeah.
It's the costing out.
Because it could be, you never know, it could be within that...
Right, well, because if the temporary pumping...
It could be less, because...
Yeah.
Don't forget, you construct something, and then you have to deconstruct.
Oh, absolutely.
Your base for deconstruction.
Well, and this bottom number is...
If you make it permanent, all you have is the construction part of it.
Well, the bottom number has the permanent line in it. It's, but the other piece of it is temporary. And if the first one, the total temporary one could be up to 7.2 million, whereas this third choice is 5.7.
It's 5.7, that's permanent.
Then if we switch it out, it might still be within the 7.2.
Yeah, that was my thought, too.
Well, we're all just guessing, so...
We're totally speculating, absolutely.
So...
But I do think, Jason, I would like to have figures both ways.
Dave, what do you think?
Permanent is very important.
Thank you.
If we look into this, will we be within our timeframe, Tom?
Depends on how long it takes them to look into it.
Remember, they can't start really without us, anyway.
No, they can't, but we have a favorable attitude right now with the deputy commissioner.
So let's invite him to the next meeting.
Let's not go that far yet.
Maybe not the very next meeting. I think we were talking about November.
Make sure he wears a protective helmet.
Yeah.
Yeah, we want to spend public time for anything.
All right, Dave, you got two other, three other options here, and it's getting late, so let's go.
Plains Road is...
We've got a long agenda.
Will do 400 gallons per minute. Cost is 4.6 million. That includes the water district improvements, which I believe were about 1.7. That was favored over the other choice of crossing the river, also because of the schedule, a shorter schedule. Plus, the road groundwater source is 2.1 million. It's 20 to 22 months is the estimated schedule. Provide 100 gallons per minute.
Or up to 180 if they're not using it next October, for the same cost.
Same cost. There is acquisition cost that is not included in this price on the Plains Road property. We need six acres. The owner has expressed that he would like to sell the whole parcel.
Oh, the part.
He also said that he was willing to do eminent domain to be able to establish fair market value, so he's willing to sell.
Do your prices for Plains Road include putting every property on water?
We are going, we're taking all of the properties on Locust Lane, Shunkup View, Woodland Drive, all the properties down to Cedar Lane, that's where we're ending at.
And that figure is included in here?
Yes.
1.7.
Every house, if they so choose, to be broke down to...
The town of Lloyd was 9.8 million.
Can I go back? Does anybody want to talk about town of Lloyd?
No. Not, I don't want to see it, turn it all surrounding.
I mean, well, I don't want that, and I also don't want to be, I don't want to have to have another municipality that could, you know, change rates on us, or, I mean, I like the, like, part of our idea behind all of this was that we do want to have our own water source, which I think the community would really benefit from, so...
Now, you talked about drawdown. Does that suggest that this is a finite reservoir?
There is. The reason we did the 72-hour test and then kicked it down to a lesser amount was trying to see where that recharge was, being able to model this stuff.
Okay, so we've accounted for that?
There is a gallons per minute that will come out of this that is sustainable. 400 is greater than that, and that would take another test to put this online for the permit.
Yeah, I hate to bring this topic up, but I'm going to, anyway. In your cost to run municipal water to the residents that we talked about?
Up to Cedar Lane?
Does that cost also include hooking up to their properties?
That includes from the main, 200 feet. Most houses can be hooked up within 50 feet of the main.
So, so we have accounted for the cost?
No. It doesn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't cover your cost to hook your house up?
It takes it to the house, but plumbing inside has to be done by the owner. Be able to connect that to the house system, every house is going to be...
If I have a well, I have a house system. Now...
You have a choice, so far?
Why can't I hook it to my house system?
You can't. That's, that's the responsibility, the homeownership. Just hooking that up, if we would bring it up to the house, they would take it in the house and hook it into their house system.
How much is that going to cost?
Want me to take a guess?
Uh huh.
Less than $1,000.
Less than $1,000 per household? Why won't D E P pay for that?
For the same reason...
Nope, it's very different.
It's the exact same issue.
I don't think so.
We are the executor of this project. D E P is not the executor of this project.
We can't spend money, public monies to benefit a limited number of homeowners. So that's the same reason why we can't hook up on the sewer on Prospect and Millard.
Slightly different issue, because D E P...
It has a state law, it applies to D E P as well.
I would like to look to check on that, for sure.
Well, he's already looking into what the law is, so I think, yeah, yeah, he can look into all of these things that have been done there, I don't...
It's customary to bring the service up to the house or something like this. I don't know if there's a law that doesn't allow that.
That's something we need to think about.
Arianna brought up something that, you'll see a theme develop in all of this, it's like, don't buy water. Really, I looked at what the village has spent, the D E P's water sources pretty cheap comparatively.
Comparatively to what?
.015 cents per gallon. But you use a lot of water.
We do use water.
You've paid between 200 and 300,000 dollars each year, and it's going up 11%.
And plus, the company who run the water plant, it's a half a million dollars a year.
Yeah, not only purchase it, then you have to treat it. It's expensive. That's the positive thing, like, getting your own source, and if you could have the backup, the aqueduct as a backup, just use it when you need it to, if you need it to.
Right, that would have to be agreed upon in a new contract rendered with, with New York.
Oh, I don't think so. Our contract doesn't say that state that we have to draw a certain amount of water.
It says if we go off.
Oh, but we would stay connected.
Well, wait, wait, I mean, we've had these conversations at not the highest level, we're not, I've never spoken or never met Paul Rush, but we've had this conversation with Dan Carr and Bill, and they've all said that they would remain in the same role that they are now. The change would be that we would be using them less.
Right.
And the less would be as little as we could, but we would still have, I don't see why the contract would change.
Yeah, I don't think it would.
I see no reason to pick the contract.
The contract is 1929.
I know that.
And it does need to be changed.
I've read it often.
Me, too. And so it needs to be changed.
You may want it changed, it does not mean that it will have to change because of this.
Right.
You're saying it will have to change because, it does not have to change because of this. If you want to change it, you can move that to be changed, and we could consider changing. I might like to change it, but it does not have to change because of this.
I disagree.
Well, good, okay, we disagree.
So, this is just, again, kind of an opinion question, but in terms of the Springtown Road, do you feel it would be a positive consideration for FEMA, et cetera, et cetera, being that it is a floodplain, but yet we still have the backup? With the...
That's an interesting idea.
Do you know what I'm saying?
Still have the equipment in the floodway, though.
She's suggesting that because we do have the backup of New York City and true disaster occur in the floodplain, would FEMA not be as restrictive? Isn't that what you're asking?
Yes, if we have the aqueduct as the backup during...
Because we have the backup for it.
An actual disaster.
They're really concerned about the equipment that's out here. They really care less how much you use it, though. I think it's still the equipment that's in the floodway which is going to be an issue. I'm not saying you can't deal with it.
So FEMA's concern is not so much about what happens to the water supply and our ability to use the water when the equipment is affected by a flood. They're concerned with the cost of replacing that equipment when it's affected by a flood.
Well, they're concerned about any effects that it has.
They don't care about us at all.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying, they would pay for the replacement, that's why they care. They care because if we were, if we put something in a floodplain and then there's a flood, and then we need to replace it, we call FEMA and get them to help us get money to replace it. So that's why they care.
Maybe, David, give us one. Maybe, David, give us money.
Maybe they would, maybe they wouldn't, but that's the reason why it matters to them, is what I'm asking. Yeah.
But is it true that we can maybe strike some of these things off the list? And corollary to that, it looks to me like the Wallkill River or Plains Road plus our reservoir meet what we need?
And the reservoir at 25% of the demand, Plains Road was 66%, Plessor was 16%, and it's up to 107%.
You're missing one question.
The river will, we don't need anything.
We don't need anything. With Plains Road, we need Plains Road and our reservoir. With the...
Flashboards.
The flashboards and the improvements, so. Right?
Yep.
So, I would like to suggest that we just get rid of Plessor and the town of Lloyd as part of this discussion.
I'd agree with that.
I agree.
Plessor, you put it with...
So, we're always talking about, Jason, when do we do the secret part of this?
When we pick, when we pick an option.
What I was going to ask you was, can we do it now with two options?
We just, we wait, we wait, it's wasting, yeah. We wait, we might settle on one and then we'll see around that.
How soon would we know? How quickly we can get the restrictions of implementation done for the Wallkill River? It's going to take 25, well, it's actually going to take 32 to 36 months for Plains Road, right?
25 to 28, so it'd be the first.
That's the first option.
Right.
But, what is the second then?
That's going under, across the river.
Yeah, okay, so to complete the whole system. Oh, oh.
These are two options.
Okay, oh, okay, we got rid of the going under the water.
That's up to us, I mean, we can decide that we're getting rid of that.
So, I think we ought to concentrate our discussion on Plains Road with the water place that you said to get the first thing, to go down to the end across. And the Wallkill River.
And the Wallkill River?
Yes.
Remember, we wanted, Dave was going to see about the cost of a permit.
Yes.
Yes.
Option for the Wallkill, so we don't have all the information.
We don't have all the information, but along with that information, I want to push Ariana's point, and that is, how much time can we reduce?
About 10 to 12 months, yeah.
Probably none, but we'll find out.
I'll see what I can find out.
Well, I just really, I really believe, because this is not a project that we're taking on of our own accord, and it's something that is so much more... Well, I...
FEMA doesn't care, the Health Department doesn't care.
How is he going to find that out? How is he going to discern what FEMA is going to require of a project that... How is he going to find out?
I don't, I don't know if we, if we can come up with a...
You're assuming that by not asking. But what Ariana is saying, let's, let's push him to the wall. Let's find out how much time they're really talking about. This is an emergency of extenuating circumstances for New York City and for us. And how quick are they going to be? How quick is the Army Corps of Engineers? How quick is the Department of Health going to be to help do this?
I really think we shouldn't get too hung up on this. At least in my experience, the agencies, we, the villages have had projects that we're waiting on DEC or Health Department or something. They have their, their schedule. They say six months, it could be six months, it could be whatever. I understand what you're saying, I'm just disagreeing with you. I'm saying that it's not a fruitful avenue to look, or to put our hopes, too much...
But I don't want to rule the Wallkill River out.
No one's saying, no one's saying that, no one's saying that.
Because we don't have enough time according to this time objection.
The DEP is going to have to be flexible on their schedule, is what I'm, is what I'm saying as well. We need to do this right, right.
Regardless of who flexes on their schedule, I think if we're, you know, if we, if we want this as our water source, the time constraints shouldn't be what stops us from doing it if it means that we could have this permanent water source.
And it saves a lot of aggravation.
Yeah, so, so Dave, part of what you're looking into would also be looking at property that's out of the floodplain?
That would be part of the, that would be part of the permit.
If it's only OSI that we could pay.
Yeah, exactly. Also because that...
Well, I just want to go on record saying, I think that giving up focus on Plessor is a mistake. I don't see why we would give up focus on Plessor in order to focus on the Wallkill.
I don't think we have to.
Well, I think we should, because I think it's too far. It's too many, too much piping.
For not enough...
For not enough water.
Why don't, why don't we do this if, if it's right with everybody? Because this was kind of a last-minute thing, and it's 10 o'clock. We have people still waiting for two and a half hours for their agenda item. Can we continue this conversation at our next meeting? Assuming we're not going to make all our decisions tonight, you know?
I wanted to propose that we have a special meeting where we focus just on this.
Fine with me.
I think that's a great idea.
That sounds good.
And can we invite all of the questions? Everybody to come.
As long as we're focused on one issue, because we didn't get started on this one for an hour and a half.
And?
And we're going to fade, and, and, add it, add it.
We have 14 agenda items to get done tonight, is what I'm saying.
So, can we propose that we would agree on a schedule for a special meeting to be held within the next two or three weeks? So that we could focus on this issue and come up with a date?
Yep.
I'll send you a doodle in the morning with a couple of dates and we'll...
Yep, let's do it.
Thanks. Anything else, Thomas, Dave?
This is my water.
Alright, thanks, Dave.
We had a young man, oh, I don't know whether he was young or not, who was at one of our early, early discussions, who heads the water systems to Westchester.
Matthew Vito. He's a partner in business, I don't think, Matthew Vito. I have his contact information.
Could we also make sure he knows about this meeting? Because he has a lot of interesting things to say about the Wallkill River and how we might deal with it.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, so moving, I'm going to just move us along. Don and John, you want to join us up here? Do you want to sit in the audience for the plastic bag discussion? While David's cleaning, while David's cleaning up...
I appreciate, I appreciate all of this information.
Alright, good. I'll move, I'll move the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
We have a correction on the...
We've got that.
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Daddy.
I'm in favor of adopting this plastic bag ban with the change that Adele had pointed out.
And the effective date.
We already, yeah, the effective date.
Okay, I'll second because I want to pass it, but I also think we should talk about...
Let me, can I make my motion?
Oh, you're...
Nope, I hadn't started the... Folks, Rebecca, Don, if you could...
Okay.
Help us move on. I'll, excuse me, Sally, let me get the meeting back on track here. I was, I was in the middle of making a motion, there was a bunch of conversations going on, so excuse, pardon me. I'll move that we adopt this little law with the following change, that the phrase in 160-5, that A, that began, that is, the owner of the property or the violation occurred, or the owner's agent or stop, be removed, and the effective date be added is April 1st, 2015. Is there a second?
I'll second it, but I think the wording isn't quite right.
Okay.
The wording was, "In the event that there is noncompliance with this chapter by a business in the Village of Newport, the owner of the business shall be notified in writing." And that's what we talked about.
I don't think we need to say "in the Village of Newport." We don't need to say "in the Village of Newport."
Okay.
The owner, so change...
If the event that there is noncompliance with this chapter by a...
By a business in the Village of Newport.
We don't need to have that phrase, because those are all self-evident. What if we just said?
By a business then?
With, "In noncompliance with this chapter, the business owner committing such violation shall be notified in writing." Because they're, they're the ones who would be violating the law, is the business owner.
No.
Yes.
He's responsible, but he may not be violating.
Businesses can't break the law. Well, yes, they can.
Yes, they can. So, that's why we talked about the wording that we had. "In the event that there is noncompliance with this chapter by a business, the owner..."
See, I'm gonna, I just don't think it's necessary. I don't think it's necessary, and it's not, I won't accept that as a precedent.
I think, I think what Sally's saying is that we should go.
And that's what we agreed to at the beginning.
We didn't, wait, like an hour ago?
Yeah.
Can John?
I just wanted to point out that the law specifies that it's for retail sales, so that in itself limits who we're talking about in terms of being liable for breaking the law. It's at the point of a retail sale, so a landlord could give someone a plastic bag to carry something into a house, they're not selling anything. So, it's the retail element that explains who is included in the law.
Makes sense.
Yes, but you have that in the definition, so that's not the problem. So, I think it is...
Wait, and Jason, what do you think it should say?
I think it should say, "In the event that there is noncompliance with this chapter, the business owner committing such violation shall be notified in writing," yada, yada, yada.
Oh, yeah, that's good.
That's what I'm saying.
I agree.
I find a modification that I...
Of course you do.
No, I don't, I mostly don't have one. But I would say something like this. "In the event that there is noncompliance with this chapter, the owner or local manager of the business." Because there, we're not going to, for example, find the owner of STS or certain businesses or students. But there is a local manager who is responsible for running the business, it's not a...
Okay, well, I guess, I guess, you know what? That would cover whether or not it is a franchise. It wouldn't matter because it would just say.
I don't know.
Because if it's a franchise and it's an owner, then it's all...
That's why I had it worded the way I did. By the business, okay?
But we, we can't hand a business, we can't the owner of the business.
Well, no, but her, what she's saying is, if the violation is by a business, the owner will, the business owner will get it, get written.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
That's what Sally's going to do.
I don't think that's what Sally's...
She said specifically, but it doesn't matter.
It doesn't.
It doesn't matter, but she did say specifically, "The business owner, we get the violation."
So, how would you phrase it, the business owner and or... And or...
Or, not and.
Or...
Or local manager.
Owner, owner or man, business owner or manager?
Yes.
Is that simple enough?
Business owner or manager.
Is that good?
Alright, I'll accept, yeah, that change, and then, so any, are there any other?
So, I want to speak about what Len brought up. The, because I remember Health and Nutrition did have for a while, like, a corn-based plastic kind of bag, and they would charge an additional, I think it was like $0.25 per bag or something like that. And people were upset, and then they went back to just having, you could have a box if you don't, don't have a bag. So, I don't know if we want to say anything about bags like that. I mean, I know, working with community compost for an organic farm, we cannot take certain corn-based compostables, because a lot of the times they have plasticizers in them or they're made from GMO corn. So, we might not want to even open that door, because it's not biodegradable the way that, like, some, like what Len was describing in terms of stuff that just like breaks down in water. There definitely are things like that, but then what's the difference between that and a paper bag if it's raining? You know, there's no difference.
Yes.
Well, this doesn't prevent people from bringing their own bags and refusing to pay.
No, that's what I'm talking about. I'm saying, I'm saying if the retailer would want to provide some other kind of, like, like bio bags that are meant to line your compost or your regular, regular trash bin, is that they have biodegradable liners, and they're corn, non-GMO, corn-based bags. Is what I, is what I'm talking about. Because I think...
But I don't think, you don't close that. Nothing says they have to use a paper bag. They could, the merchant could use any kind of bag.
As long as it's not plastic.
Including the kind that washed down, you know? Like the, the little things that come in packages.
Well, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is that in the definitions, there's, it's, there's nothing that allows or doesn't allow for it. And the recyclable paper bag and reusable bag are both referenced in the restriction on checkout bags, shall provide only reusable bags and recyclable paper bags, whereas I guess these would be biodegradable bags? I don't know, what are, what are your thoughts on what?
In, in all the reading that I've done, the research in the issue, I've never come across any discussion of these biodegradable bags. My instinct would be that having a bag on plastic retail bags does not exclude biodegradable bags in any way.
Right.
And also, I would venture a guess that those bags would be significantly more expensive than other options. So, the likelihood that we would see that is lower, but I don't think there's anything in the law that would prevent anyone from using a biodegradable bag should they choose to do so, and I don't know if anyone would.
Okay.
And there's nothing to prevent by, in this law, that a business can't say, "I'm sorry, I'm not giving you a bag." He doesn't have to provide a bag.
Oh, right.
Okay.
You know, on that point, I, I feel like we should go ahead and move with where we are now. If, if the situation comes up where a business does want to use that type of a bag, first of all, we would want to know exactly what it is, like, how, you know, what the material is. They can always come and request the ability to do that. And also, we could revisit the law. If enough businesses chose to use that sort of a bag, we can always amend this.
Point of information, please. But perhaps Don or John can answer to point of information that the board allows. Is it legitimate to call a corn-based biodegradable substance, whether it's GMO or not GMO, substance, plastic? If it's not plastic, then a bag made out of it is not a plastic bag. And if it's not a plastic bag, this law is nothing, there's no restriction on this law, in this law, for such an item. Therefore, this kind of item can be used regardless.
If this law passes, you can use a plastic like...
Any corn-based biodegradable bag because it's not made out of plastic.
But that's...
It's...
Excuse me, thank, thank, no, not actually, thank you.
But, but Tom, actually, the law does say that, because in 160-4, it says, "Any person engaged in retail sales shall provide only reusable bags and or recyclable paper bags as checkout bags to customers." And both are defined.
Yes, which is why I think that we should visit it if it, if it does come up.
Or what if we just replace the word recyclable with biodegradable?
With what?
Biodegradable.
No, I wouldn't be, I think it has to be reusable bags slash bio.
I disagree.
Well, I think, I think we could add another definition.
I don't need to.
It's a, may I, Mr. Mayor?
Well, just somebody, one person talk at a time.
One person at a time. I'll try to bring it up. Reusable bag says a bag with handles that is specifically designed and manufactured with multiple purposes and is made of cloth or other fabric. Or, made of durable plastic, that is. Or, so, it, it could be of other fabric, which would be a reusable bag, therefore would be permitted by this law.
Yes, the cellulose bags would not.
And they're reusable.
Well, any bag is reusable technically.
Right.
The kind that we're talking about, the doggone kind are recyclable, so I don't see that we need to add anything.
Well, because, no, Ariana and Rebecca are right. Well, because, no, Ariana and Rebecca are right. 160-4 allows you to only use two kinds of bags.
No, it doesn't.
Yes, it does.
Sally, Ariana, both of you, please let me finish a sentence. Either A, reusable bags, and Tom just read the definition, or recyclable paper bags. Nowhere in that would you be allowed to use the plastic-like, cornstarch, biodegradable bags. So, but it's a simple fix. And all you have to do is take out recyclable paper and put in biodegradable or another synonym. And then, we don't have to worry about it, because whatever, as long as the bag is biodegradable, doesn't matter what it's made of. Except for plastic, which is out of the law specifically. So...
But my question, Jason, is... Recyclable, just take out paper and say recyclable bags. That takes care of it all.
You can't, you can't put those cellulose bags in your recycling, like, you can't do...
They're not recyclable. They're biodegradable.
They're not curbside compost. Not curbside compost. They're not... You can recycle them at the curb. Sure, you could probably recycle them at some industrial facility. But you still be...
Biodegradable cornstarch bags are not recyclable?
No.
No, they're compostable.
They're compostable.
They're compostable. You can't recycle corn.
No, but that's... But you could use the cornstarch bag a couple of different times.
You could, but it is...
But it's recyclable.
No, 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 because that is reusable. And reusable is specifically designed and manufactured for multiple reuse. Whereas biodegradable bags are quite the opposite.
Single-use.
All right, I'll concede to you.
I'm having fun talking about this, as you can tell.
I'll amend my motion to take into that account that change as well, replacing recyclable paper with the word biodegradable.
So it's going to say now...
Uh, "Any person engaged in retail sales shall provide only reusable bags and/or biodegradable bags as checkout bags to customers."
I know. I think what we should do is just add one more definition, and we should keep the recyclable paper bag, because I like the definition that we have here. That is 100% recyclable overall and contains a minimum of 40% post-consumer recyclable.
So what about, how about this?
I think that's an important piece.
How about this? After the phrase, "Only reusable bags," comma, "biodegradable bags" and/or "recyclable paper bags."
It doesn't.
Any objection?
What about the...
No.
What about the issue of GMO? Of them, of...
Of the what?
Of GMO products.
I think it's more important to ban the plastic bags than to... I mean, I don't really know. I don't know. It's too late.
Well, yeah. I still like the idea of someone coming to us for approval.
I'm sorry. We have Sally's called a question, which means we now vote on closing debate. All in favor of closing debate, say aye.
Aye.
Um, oh, great. Opposed? Yeah, aye. I'd rather say aye. Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Would be nay.
Nay.
Uh, the motion and debate carries. So the motion on the ground, on the floor, is to amend the law with the three changes enumerated. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
Your first local law and the first, the first actual, the first actual, the first real achievement of our new environmental policy committee.
Yes. Thank you guys so much. And no fifty goes on punny. This is very appreciated.
Happy discussion. Just this final thing. Good night.
Good night, guys.
Good night.
All right, because, uh, the comments in response to, the response to public comments are only... I'm only able to get them out tomorrow. Um, I'll unfortunately table this again.
No, no, can't wait. We'll talk about it.
Well, it's 10:15, and we're on item six of 15, so I'm trying...
What are you putting this at?
The housing, the rental property law. We told them, we told them that we wouldn't act on it until...
I don't want to act on it, but I want to make some changes.
Okay, then what else are we tabling? If we're going to talk about that, we're tabling other things.
Do I table? I don't care.
Let me see.
I just, some of the questions that I've asked repeatedly, I'd like to see where we are on it. Because I'd like to support the law, but it does have some things in it that are a problem.
Um, I think this is a long conversation. I think this law is, I mean, if we just spent that much time on the plastic ban, bag ban...
Well, maybe we all agree, to surprise ourselves.
Well, why don't we just give this a few minutes and see where it goes? And then we'll move on if we need to.
Yeah, but we have 10 minutes to go with this and that one.
And I know Tom had a, I talked, I had a conversation with Tom about, actually Adele's comment, about the force majeure.
Okay.
And there is one clarification I wanted to make quickly, because this came up in the comments. Um, people have been making a distinction between a registration and a license. Um, there's no difference.
That's Will told us that.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure people understood that.
I don't think that's...
We issue both. We do both. It's just a matter of what wording they like better.
I think we have to talk about the effective date. And whenever we pass this, it can't go into effect mid-lease for people. So I think we're gonna have to decide June 1st. That's when most people...
Yeah, that's when a lot of changeover happens. But that's far from everyone.
What does a lease have to do with this? I'm confused.
Well, I'm just telling you my overall concerns. I think we have to have an effective date on this, Jason, that it doesn't go into effect.
But why? You said that, but why?
Because most people, their leases expire...
But you're, you're, why does extension of lease have anything to do with the law? I'm missing something.
Because you're saying that you must be inspected to rent. That was a question...
That's the status quo now.
So I think we have to have an effective date that is reasonable when most leases, when people are coming to re-register that they're going to rent. I would suspect is in June.
Um, I can see your point. However, um, what happens is that there are so many rentals in the village that we do rental inspections every week, all year long. So the effective date doesn't really matter, because that your annual inspection, they're up every day of the year. There's no, there's no mass of them.
I think there are, looking at the rental index that I looked at.
Just because, just because somebody's...
When people register...
Just because somebody's lease is June to June, they could be inspected in March, in November, in July, in...
You're missing my point. I asked you at the beginning of this discussion, months ago, the question, "Do I have to be inspected before I rent?" And you said yes.
Yes, and that's current...
Now you're saying the opposite.
You cut me off. That's current law. That's nothing new in this. Right now, today, you have to be registered to rent.
Then our inspection schedule is screwed up and wrong. Because if Rebecca rents her apartment and I, then she rents it in June, and I rent mine in September, okay? Somebody has got to be registered to do this. And that means Rebecca is in her apartment, probably, and I'm in mine before it's ever inspected. So that's nonsense to say that you can't rent if it hasn't been inspected.
It's not nonsense. It's what we do now. And, I mean, I don't know how else to put it. We do inspections every day, most days, I should say.
And people rent those apartments.
Right, but the lea, but... But the law says, the law says you have to have the property inspected once a year. It doesn't say...
That's not what this says.
It's annual, annual inspections. That's what annual means.
But I asked you the question.
And I'm answering.
Months ago, separately.
You may not like my answer, but I've answered you.
I asked you a simple question. You are the landlord. You want to rent to me. Do you have to be inspected before you rent to me? I said yes, but that's not the practice.
It is the practice.
May I answer you just a second? Because I didn't understand either what was going on. So Sally, your raise, what am I, is my understanding that whether somebody breaks the lease, moves on and dies, the landlord's gonna rent the apartment again. When the landlord rents the apartment again, does the landlord have to have that inspected in advance?
That's not what I meant.
That's not what I was... Then I didn't understand. Then I was right. I didn't understand.
Okay, I am saying that based on what you are saying, we inspect every day all year round. But my registering to be able to rent could have been six months ago. Right? That means I'm renting to Tom, and I have been renting to Tom for six months before that apartment ever gets inspected.
No, because it was inspected last year.
Right.
Right. But that, I understand that. But I think Jason didn't understand what I asked. And that is, my question was, "Am I able to rent if I haven't been inspected?" And the answer is no, according to you, in this law.
And the current law.
But that is not the practice we're following.
No, it is the practice of...
When somebody purch, so I have a situation in mind of somebody that I know who purchased the house, and it was already a rental property, but they had to re-register it under their own name. And they did so, even though it was already being rented. Upon purchasing it, they went to the building department, had it inspected. And it was, continued to be rented the entire time. But say that person failed that inspection, then they would have had to deal with it at that point. But it had been inspected by the previous owner. When the new owner came in, they restarted the clock, regardless of when the last inspection was.
I think either I'm speaking incorrect English or you guys aren't getting the question. Okay. I have rented a house. All right, and just say, "I sell it to you." And we'll pretend this is all a new property. You're a first-time renter to people, first-time landlord, okay? You come in and you say, "I want to rent." All right?
Am I the landlord or the tenant?
You're the landlord.
Okay.
Okay, "I want to rent." You register.
What's my role here?
You're the tenant. Francis is the debt.
Okay.
Am I able, are you able to rent to Francis before you're inspected?
No.
Hmm?
No.
No. So you have to be inspected before Francis.
Can move in.
Oh, wait, I think I might understand, but go ahead.
Do you?
I don't.
I think I'm understanding the question, but go ahead.
You're talking about a first-time scenario.
And the law doesn't say that.
Here's, maybe this is, probably not. Um, I probably don't understand. The law, nowhere says you need to get re-inspected every time you change tenants.
That's right.
And that's by design.
Every time you register, you...
But that's by design. No. Every time, once, there's, I guess you could look at it as two phases. Once is the scenario Ariana described, where you've just bought the property.
Right.
Right, and so as soon as it changes hands, you gotta go register.
You have to notify the change of hand.
After that, and it really is pretty much the date you register, 12 months later, we're gonna come back and inspect. You could have, you could have had the same tenants that whole time. You could have had six different tenants that time. Doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter. It's just every 12 months, you get inspected.
Then the law has to say that.
It does say that.
It has to separate. No, it doesn't.
That's why it says annual.
But it doesn't say, "The owner of a rental property shall file with the building department a rental property registration form as prescribed by the building inspector within the timeframe, blah, 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 and prior to its use or occupancy as a rental property."
Yes.
And that is different than what you're saying.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
Sally, you're the only one who thinks this. There may, there may be a misunderstanding here, and I don't know where it is. Um, I really don't know, I don't understand what the, what the difference of opinion is, to be honest. I don't see it.
I think it does say it. After, go down to C. "After the inspection, the application made by the owner shall contain, blah, 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 blah." Rental property inspection required. We don't... An approved rental property registration form shall be valid for one year from the date issued. For a registration to be valid, it must be accompanied by a successful annual inspection report.
But if we're gonna do what you're saying, we have to kick out all the tenants before we inspect it every time.
That's why I asked the question originally.
It doesn't say that. It doesn't, it doesn't say that, Sally.
I think it does.
I mean, I don't know what else to tell you. I mean, you're the only one who has an opinion. Um, maybe you should email Will and see if...
I think you just need some clarification.
I think it's written fine the way it is.
Now, C, I think, the second part of that. If it is feasible for the owner...
Where are you?
Down in, right below that.
129-9?
Okay?
If the property is found lacking one or more of the following?
That should stand alone and make, "If it is feasible for the owner to remedy a violation during the inspection in which it is identified." I in no way want to connect if a property is found lacking one or more of the following. There's no way in 24 hours you can... That is where I believe the whole temporary housing kicks in. If, there are two ways, but I'll even grant one way right now. If, I believe, if the property is found lacking one or more of the following, running water, heat or heat source, electricity, sanitary facilities, windows and sleeping space, cooking facilities and/or smoke carbon monoxide detector, and you are found renting that property and you have not registered, that's when you have to give in the temporary housing. I'm not interested, because I think that's where we're in the problem with people asking, "Well, what if a tree fell?" Okay, that's not what I consider the problem. If I have not registered as a landlord, I get caught. And you come to inspect, and you find one of these lacking, that's when the temporary housing must be provided.
You know, honestly, I can't even think straight about this anymore.
Oh.
I can't focus. It's been three hours.
Do you want me to send you?
It's been 12 minutes.
No, three hours of a meeting.
No, I, no, no, it's only...
Since we set time, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, can you email me? That would be easier, because then I can...
Okay, I'll email everybody what my changes are.
And I'm gonna, if, if no one objects, I'm gonna put this on the next agenda, but we're gonna do it first.
Yes.
I think that's very good.
When we're fresh.
Can straighten this out.
Yeah, and, and it'll give time for, I wanna talk to you and make sure I understand what your concern is. I still think I don't.
But my other concern is that I think the wording that we have in the current code regarding going in, now it ended, oh, here. Um, inspection procedure. I think we ought to use the wording we have.
All right, I'll look at that too.
Okay. That's, I, I think there is a constitutional question there. I, I really do, and I think the wording that, that's in the current law is probably better. And that is, you know.
All right, can, what, uh, can we not go through the list if you?
I'm gonna send you.
Yeah.
But those are the two big issues.
Rebecca.
And just another request, can we have it back to a more legible?
Yeah, I don't know why it's, oh.
It's.
Oh, there's comments in the margin.
It is a little hard to read, isn't it?
Yeah, it's tiny and it's faded.
Okay.
It's probably been photocopied.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I have the.
All right, yeah, if you have comment, please email me your comments.
Does this have to go to the planning board and the county board?
We, no, don't have to go to either one.
Doesn't have to go to either?
Nope, doesn't involve zoning or land use in any way.
Just wanted to make sure, okay.
All right.
So I'll send everybody my concerns.
And please, everyone else, please send it if you have concerns.
I said everybody.
No, if everyone else would send their concern, like, you know, I have time to.
No, I already had my discussion too.
Yeah, and we'll talk about that.
Actually, Sally and I have already discussed it, so I'm not gonna send you anything.
All right.
The other, this is a logistic question to think of, has nothing to do with the law.
Mm-hmm.
And that is, do we have the staff to enforce this properly? Because the last thing I wanna do is pass a law that is not being enforced.
Yes, we do.
All right.
I'm confident of that.
Okay.
Um, 'cause I've talked to the building inspectors about it.
Okay.
All right, um, these other ones may be briefer. Um, I'll move, well, I'll move that we adopt the local law on chickens. Is there a second for discussion?
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
Yes. I'm opposed to this, I'm opposed to the reduction to one quarter of an acre, and I am utterly opposed to not limiting it to six. As we agreed to a long time ago, you need six chickens or none, but this law does not have that. And I also think that the, if we're going to ask the planner what she thinks, her recommendation should be included.
In the packet, or in the law?
She wrote us, "March 28, 2014, the section C4 should read, the fence and/or structure does not exceed five feet in height."
Well, then, I'll move we add that, we amend the law to reflect that.
You can't, you already moved the rent door.
Well, withdraw my motion and remove it.
Okay.
That we adopted with that, to with that change. Do you agree with that change? Do you wanna second it again?
Yeah, sure, second.
Okay. So, there, Brandon's comments have been added.
Well, that's very good, now what are you gonna do but the six chickens?
I disagree with you, so I'm gonna stand my ground on this one. We'll, well, for a little while, we'll see if I cave or not.
Well, I.
Anyone have comments?
I just would like to, uh, comment briefly. Um, I was, um, moved, as it were, by Rich Steffens', uh, comment at the, not this meeting, of course, but a week or so ago, when he mentioned the bear and the village and the attraction of, uh, the bear to chickens. And, uh, I had an incident last night in which I cannot verify that it was a bear, I sent a paw print to, uh, the D E C.
Does bear eat chickens?
Uh, I don't have chickens.
Does bear eat chickens?
Yes.
They do?
Yeah.
They, they eat a variety.
Garbage, probably.
They eat garbage too, yeah.
Chicken and baskets.
They like, they like, they like, they like strawberries, but we're not, we're not worried about strawberries.
Are you gonna vote against this law because of the bears? Is that what you're saying?
I don't, I don't, I also agreed with a number of the other comments about sanitation and, uh, and, uh, policing, so, yes, I'm gonna vote against it.
But all of those are status quo in the existing law? That are on the book, that's on the books? This just amends up one or two phrases in that law.
Well, this, this intensifies it.
Maybe.
Because it reduces the acre, it is required to have it.
What about the two of you? Have you wasted my time with this law?
No, no, I'm, I'm gonna vote for it.
Fine with it.
Any other discussion?
Yes, I'm gonna request a roll call though.
Okay. All right, no other discussion, all, or not all, sorry.
Mayor Rest?
Aye.
Um, Deputy Mayor Rata?
Aye.
Uh, Trustee Vasco?
Aye.
Trustee Rhodes?
Posed.
Trustee Rock?
Posed.
Okay, moving on. Uh, penalties, fees, and fines. Uh, I apologize, this took so long to get the final version. There's, this would, this would come in two parts. Uh, one would be the local law itself, and if we adopt the local law, we would then have to adopt the fee schedule.
Right.
So that we, you know, swap one out for the other. Um, just to mention, I, I emailed this afternoon, I don't know if everyone had a chance to see it.
I saw that you emailed it, I had not looked.
There's just a couple changes I went over with Nancy, I, I just wanted to point out on the fee schedule itself.
Okay, good, 'cause I had one thing that I thought was missing.
It's on the sheets, that you gave us.
Well, basically, I got a, an email today from Katie. I guess she and Sally had found a couple of the things we needed, like the park use deposit, the photocopy cost or, has been added, every, basically everything in your email, Sally and Katie, was added.
Yep.
To this.
Katie said it was.
Nancy helped me figure out the, that, uh, some of our insurance is, again, out of date, the purpose of this law, but under chapter 82 blasting and explosives, um, you'll see that the, the, the insurance request is increased to not less than a million dollars per person for bodily injury, 1.5 million for personal property, um, and the same is for waste, should be for waste hauling under licensing, solid waste.
That, that it would say what?
The same exact insurance requirement, which would be $1 million per person for bodily injury.
Okay.
And you're covered for 1.5 million in personal property damage.
Okay. I, I had thought it was higher, I'm looking at this now, but.
It was probably 500,000, I think.
Well, yeah, it's, it's actually is, uh, 100 to 300,000 per person. Um, and I thought it was more than that.
Yeah, no, this is, this is from P E, that selective insurance agent.
It's actually, the, my only comment was in the solid waste area as well. Um, in terms of licensing, they, they pay, there's a permit fee.
It's there. I double-checked, I'm absolutely certain.
I don't, I don't see it.
Um, it's, I think it's in the.
Maybe it's in the new one, since solid waste collection out.
At least I thought I saw it.
I'm positive I saw it, 'cause I looked for it.
Solid waste collection out.
I mean.
And it's not listed.
Sort of a code, code book, or, so we missed one?
I don't think so.
No, I don't think. It's, I mean, it's just simply not here, it's licensing procedure.
Do you have the code, do you have the code up, do you know the chapter and verse of the code?
I don't, I don't have it up. I just circled it in this.
And what number is it?
Isn't it under grass, rubbish, and trash?
I, I looked under that as well, it's out there, it's enforcement and penalties for offenses is under that.
I'm absolutely certain.
$100?
I looked for it.
Yeah.
What are you, I'm sorry, what are we looking for?
That's, that's something else.
The, the filing fee?
Um, yeah, to, to obtain a permit in the village, I believe it's $200, is what I had seen, is what I had read last, and that, that one is not here.
Do you have the capacity to look up the code on your thing?
I could.
And we could, 'cause that, that would be a very useful thing to have added, if it's there.
Right.
But that, that, we, we can, if we adopt this as a annual fee schedule, it can be amended at any time.
At any time, yeah.
I'm gonna, to delete the penalties, fees, and fines from the village.
Wait, wait, hold on one second, there was one other thing I changed I wanted to tell people about on this thing.
On what?
On this, the fee schedule.
Oh, well, that we're gonna adopt later.
Okay, you're just skipping, you're skipping ahead. So you wanna, you wanna, you wanna move to adopt the local law?
I'm moving to adopt the local law to remove penalties and fees and fines from the village.
Okay, I'd like to make an amendment, I'll second that if you'd be willing to make an amendment.
What's your amendment?
Um, I, this is what I was about to say, is that I found something that shouldn't be in here at all. And it is, let me find the page.
Do they stay in the law?
This, this isn't, it should, well, that's the question.
That way it's there for everybody, just so everybody knows.
Um, on page 8-19 in your, in your packet?
8-19.
8-19.
This is why.
Uh, halfway, almost exactly halfway down, you see 212-35V2. And that's not the one?
Yes, yes, yes.
It will be determined at the last meeting.
Yeah, what about it?
So technically, you're both right.
Yeah.
Maybe I was wrong. There was something about flood insurance that we didn't, that wasn't a, a.
Let me just do it a different way. I will.
Oh, wait. 781, I'm sorry. 212-35. Oh, what's not, it's not in the law, then never mind. My mistake. Go on.
To adopt the local law, removing penalties, fees, and fines from the village posed unless state law requires it be taken.
I'll second that. On, uh, anyone have any discussion?
No. So, so we're not doing the, the actual.
That's step two.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, this, this is local law.
And that, all good.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
So I found, I found why, why that didn't come up, because in, it's 171-3, license fee and expiration, um, and the permit fee, essentially this says that it will be determined by the village board at the last meeting, which it was determined by the village board.
So we need to add it in.
It's already been removed in the fashion that you are having it done.
So there's no dollar sign, that's why.
There's no dollar sign, exactly.
So what do we want, what's a fair fee for them, I'm sorry, what's the chapter again?
It's 171-3A.
All right. And what should, what should that be, it's currently not $50, is what we charge?
I think it's 200.
200?
Yeah, 200.
Let's pop it, yeah. 500.
It's 500 or 200, what, I mean, what do you want?
I mean, I think it should be more than both of those, really. I think realistically, it should be more than both.
500 is?
I think, I mean, I think if we're gonna.
What do you really want?
What do I really want?
Yeah.
I think it should, I don't know, at least 1,000.
Does that, 1,000?
At least 1,000, for the amount of, amount of hours I can spend on the phone dealing with people who, you know, are upset over how I.
I think you are to leave, because this is for 2014, 2015, I think you are to leave it what it is and then put per end effective 2000, June 1st, 2015, it will be. And get that in here.
Well, that would effectively be the same thing.
Yeah.
It would, it would be the same, because nobody's, nobody's purchasing one right now.
Everyone will be paying this in due manner.
Is everybody paid in?
At the same time, yeah.
We had to extend them, don't forget, we extended that.
Well, that's their own fault, if they haven't gotten to us yet.
So we don't have a conflict with your proposal?
No.
I, I don't, I don't think so.
All right.
Is 1,000 seem fair to Rebecca and Tom?
Yeah.
To the third person?
I have no idea.
From 200 to 1,000?
Seems like it.
It's a steep jump, but 200 is ridiculously low.
Well, so if it's ridiculously low, is it just kinda low if it goes to 500 from, from 200?
What do other communities?
Or is that still ridiculous?
What do other communities charge?
No idea.
That's a great question.
Then why don't we find out?
Okay.
And amend.
But, but could you, would, can we all agree on 500 for now?
Sure.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Put it in.
Good compromise. I'm going to move.
Oh, wait, there's just one more thing. And then you can make any motion you want, I swear.
Okay.
Um, just to point out, we'll have to remove one of these, but I have two rental property registration fees in here, one which is the current code, and one which is what we had agreed by consensus should be in the housing law compasses. So we'll just have to remove the new, the new one until the law passes, if, if it passes. Um, so that would be, well, chapter 129, um, would have to be removed.
I'd like to move the following resolution, be resolved that in light of the adoption of removing fees and fines from the law, that the village board will now resolve to adopt an annual fee schedule.
Second?
Um, any discussion? Is that motion specific enough?
Yes.
And, and schedule, age schedule?
No, no, and I'll leave that as the next motion. We're gonna adopt this fee schedule.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, I move to adopt the 2014, 2015 village of new funds fee schedule.
I'll second that, any discussion?
Just, uh, shouldn't say, uh.
Has amended.
Which, which will be reviewed annually at the reorganization meeting.
There we go.
It's gonna be on the reorganization.
I still second that.
All right.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Sally and Ariana, do you wanna, uh, talk about tenure, do you wanna wait until after tomorrow's meeting?
Uh, I'll talk, I didn't put this on the agenda, Rebecca.
I did.
Oh, well, we're having a meeting tomorrow, do you wanna wait until tomorrow?
Well. I definitely can't make the meeting tomorrow, but I, I'm just curious about where, um, where the complaints have come from.
For the, Rich, Rich Road, it's very clear, you have, haven't been up near the campus, but Rich Road, Orchard Lane, all of the streets, um, Hasbro.
That's, that's why I'm asking.
Okay, then Lincoln Ridge, all the way over on Little Rock, and Harrington.
Mm-hmm.
I had calls, any number of calls, some of the people knew, know too, very upset that they cannot be up in front of their own house.
Yeah, that, that was what I wanted to do. I was assuming that it was this area, but I, I just didn't know, 'cause I haven't had any calls.
The only question I need an answer to, our original proposal was R1, R2, R3, and the historic district, you know, as, as just a concept for approval, but since we have to name the roads in the law, apparently, we can't get away with saying R1, R2, we have to name every specific street. It seems to me that the streets in the northwest area, like, even upstreet, don't have a problem.
Right.
So, it would seem to me that what we should try and do is specifically name the streets we know have problems.
Understood.
And no, one of the things that keeps coming up, Kevin and Blue are absolutely opposed, and it's untrue that our roads were built wide enough. They are opposed to two-sided parking because of emergency vehicles. And emergency vehicles going through. So I just want us all to understand, that's not a, that's not a cause of.
Yeah, my, my only question was where are the complaints coming from?
Those are the ones.
You've answered my question.
But we're not proposing to change any laws that apply to the roads as they are now. So it's just a matter of enabling people who say live on Orchard that they can park[1536.44]
I understand.
On their street.
Okay, so, Don, thank you. You, you guys have your discussion tomorrow.
Tell me if you have anything you want me to bring up tomorrow at the meeting, after the, this meeting.
Okay.
If, or you.
Well, you know, if I do, I'll email you tomorrow. Yeah, that, that's, that's much better, thank you.
Okay.
Alright, um, Rebecca, you had several, but there was no, so I don't know what to do, what to do with the crosswalks and one-way signage, I don't know what you want.
Couple things, mainly coming from the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee, um, they would like us to put in crosswalks, just the striping.
Are there curb cuts there?
Yes.
Are you, are you sure?
Yes, there are.
There are on North Front and Church, there are curb cuts.
Mm-hmm. Um, the one, actually, the, the, um, the only one that doesn't have them is the corner of, um, the corner where the, the Scarborough, Scarborough Fair is, because those are older sidewalks, but the others are newer.
Church, yeah.
So we couldn't, we couldn't actually put the crosswalks there unless there's a curb cut.
Right, so we would, we could do the other two though, right.
Um, is, well, what do you want?
Unless you would like to use some of the sidewalk reserve fund for a curb cut.
Well, we don't know how much is in that fund.
There's at least ten thousand dollars, and I think a curb cut is two.
That's not a bad idea.
Shouldn't we plan to use that money rather than just whatever comes up first?
Well, can, could we move now to?
To do the crosswalks.
To do the two, yes, absolutely.
Where there are curb cuts.
Yes.
Yeah, where there are.
Absolutely.
Where there are curb cuts.
Yes.
But I, I think Amy brought up a good question, but that has to go to the TIC.
I know.
Because that's a state highway, so we need.
Right, yeah, there were other.
For Academy and Chestnut has to go to the TIC.
Yes, I know, there were others that were requested, and I said the same thing at our, at our meeting.
I'll move that we put crosswalks at the south. Uh, not curb cuts, crosswalks.
Paint, paint crosswalks.
Yeah.
Crosswalks at the south and, uh, east, eastern sections of the intersection of North Front and Church Street.
Where there are curb cuts.
And I'll second that, but I'd like to amend that we also ask Rebecca to provide a list to Arianna to take to the TIC for those crosswalks involving state highways.
Well, it shouldn't have to be a separate, I mean, I.
It should be a separate motion.
Yeah, it's, I.
No, it's the same thing, it's crosswalks.
I don't, I don't.
It does need to be there, it does need to be there.
Do you want to do it separately, I'm starting to think time.
Is there a second for my motion?
I did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sally wanna make your other motion?
Okay. That we provide Arianna with a list of other crosswalks requested that involve state highways, so that she can take that list to the TIC.
Second. Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, one-way signage, don't we already have one-way signs on?
Well, there's, there's just been complaints that, and, and I know it's because of the way that the, um, you've got the, the two parking lots there, a lot of people pull out of the lots and try to turn onto Main Street, and I don't know what the solution is, but if, if that's something that we could look at, or have the DPW look at it, um, maybe we need a sign next to the Bistro.
I mean, there's a sign.
I think you just don't look at the sign.
Right, absolutely, yeah, no, if you're, I mean, there is a one-way sign, if you are pulling out of the Bistro lot, but I will, I would agree that if you are not familiar with the streets, it is not, you're not, you're not necessarily going to.
Yeah, so just, if there's some way that we could look at it.
Why don't we just have some way, I mean, that's why we have a bike pep committee? Why don't we have them propose a solution?
But that's also why we have a DPW. Their request was for more signage.
Well, they can be more specific in their request.
Excuse me, I'll bring it back to them, Jesus.
And one of the things, uh, two years ago, there was a business community, I think they were all business community people, who were on a signage committee to review and improve, because remember we talked about that? Improve signage in the Village of Newbots, get rid of redundant signage, move municipal parking lots, signs to a place where they are reasonable before you kill somebody trying to turn left, because the sign is right in the intersection. Can we get a copy of that? I don't even know what they recommended, it never came to the village board, but supposedly, they had a plan.
Did they have a chair, a committee chair?
Yes, Kurt LaValle was the chair.
And who else was on it?
Um.
Julie Robbins.
Julie Robbins was on it, um, Lisa Moriala, whatever her married name is now.
Oh, Lisa Borg, Borg, Lisa B, B, uh, Borg, Borg.
Okay.
There were no, um, the other Julie was on it. Um, let's see if Bren has.
I'm making a note right there.
If you see Bren can find a copy of that, it would be useful to have for tomorrow, I mean, I need it. Because I'm sure signage is gonna be one of the things that people's going to discuss, because it is, it's a very important issue and it hasn't been addressed. I mean, one of the concerns that's gonna be talked about is downtown parking. I have made a point since last Monday, a week ago, to walk down during the week and look at the municipal parking lot, and it is never full. Never. Now, weekends are a different issue.
They are different.
Okay, but during the week. So we, part of our problem, I think, is signage and signage properly placed. So there should be a good sign right at the municipal parking lot that says additional parking, and take you up the street with an arrow that's point you up here, this lot's never full.
Well, we're gonna get, we're gonna talk about parking tomorrow, and see if we can.
But I think signage is gonna be a big part of it, Jason.
Yeah.
So let's see if we can get the sign committee's recommendations.
Yeah, they may have already done that work, so.
I've just sent a text to Bren, so that she can address it first thing in the morning.
And I assume discussion of streetlights is that we need, we need more of them?
Yes, well.
That's gonna come up tomorrow, too.
Yes, um, I've had, actually, a conversation with several business owners, and one thing that, um, I feel like we should do, the, there's the lot down by the sewage treatment plant, there's about thirty spots there, I go down there quite frequently, and I've never seen more than, like, three or four cars at a time.
On the weekends, it's full.
Right.
Hundred percent.
Um, and my, my concern in terms of, like, advertising it more, um, you know, giving the business owners the idea to have their employees, et cetera, parked down there, is lighting, because if you're getting out of work at night, um, it's dark, because there aren't.
But, um, the, the problem with that, and, and I really think we need to think about it, is we have provided at many discussions with downtown business people a long-term leased parking lot, which is not used. So they're gonna have to decide what they want and what they need. We fulfilled a request to provide long-term leasing to free up meters, so.
But we're not talking about leasing and parking right now, we're talking about streetlights.
But it, it goes along, but Rebecca just said, if I had to walk down there in the dark after work, okay?
Yes or no, you think we should have more streetlights at that program?
I wanna analyze who's, we have a lot of empty leases. If I have empty parking spaces in the municipal lot, Jason, I wanna get the streetlight we promised to the college first.
Well, well, we had already put in a request for that, though, from Central Hudson.
Yeah, but hasn't, nothing's happened with it.
Rebecca, that doesn't mean, that doesn't mean that we haven't done our, that we haven't moved forward with our side of it. We have, we put an official request to Central Hudson, and they had to come and do it.
No, that we were going to do solar, and we got the solar grant.
I know, but, but we had already put in an request with Central Hudson, we all voted on it, we gave them the street, the poll numbers.
Then I would suggest that we use some of the money from the solar grant that we got to do our solar lights down there.
I think we should, because we own that property.
Right.
That's a much better place for it, so I, I think that this is all something we can do.
Yes, yeah. I mentioned that a few months back, and it was.
Alright, well, Rebecca, this is your idea, what's, what's the next steps that need to happen?
Well, we need to make a motion.
I, I was asking, asking Rebecca.
Oh, I, if we, if we're going to be getting solar lights through, through a grant, then I.
We got two thousand five hundred dollars in a grant.
And it's done?
For adopting a unified solar permit.
Okay.
Um, but it wasn't, that money hasn't been allocated for anything, it's just we got twenty-five hundred bucks.
Right.
But it doesn't pay for street, streetlights necessarily, so we would need to get prices from Blue, we would need to get, know what permits are needed, we would need to know whether we can do it, or whether we need Central Hudson, so.
To do their own lights.
To, to do any streetlights. We need to know.